Good afternoon.
Yes, for the paper.
Called the meeting of Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown has the meeting been properly advertised?
It has, sir.
According to law. Thank you, sir. I guess they're still doing it from the recording, didn't they?
Yeah.
All right. Good to see everybody. Hope to have a productive meeting. Hello to everybody out there on Facebook. Sometimes we forget that we are here. Good to have you to tune in to what's going on in Liberty County. The county is not stagnant, I promise you that. Lots are going on. A lot of good things are going on because we've been working very hard with our budget, trying to get that process to a place where everybody can support that. And I promise you that we've been very diligent in all of our budget meetings and that we look out for those who are requesting and those who will have to bear the brunt of the requests. All that's been kept in mind. At this time, we're going to ask Commissioner Marion Stevens to lead us in our invocation and our pledge. Please stand for the invocation and pledge.
Most gracious Father, as we come today to unite with one another, our God, we must remember that you must be in the midst. Our God, as we pray that as the pandemic seems to be lessening, but we must continue to do what is right. Our God, we pray for those that are in harm's way, who are fighting a war. And as we come together to do the will of the county, we ask that you put your arms around us and give us the guidance that we need. Amen.
Pledge your lead.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands, one nation, God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All righty, we have some awards. Always good to present some awards. Lady Bird Johnson Award, Ms. Karen Bell is here, as well as her support team and the award recipients. Please come forward and brief us.
I thought I'd first tell you what the Lady Bird Johnson Award is all about. It's to commend the many litter prevention and beautification initiatives of former First Lady Bird Johnson, wife of President Lyndon Johnson. So every nominee has to be a volunteer who has a leadership quality of service, helping their local community to become cleaner, greener, and more beautiful. It has to, they have to volunteer that aligns with the Keep America Beautiful mission. And one or more of our focus areas of ending litter, improving recycling, and beautifying our community. They have to have at least 10 years of service. And this is the first time that this particular award is gender neutral. And I am happy to say and excited that Liberty County has the very first male that has been awarded this award. And that is Mr. Willie Cato. So just a little bit, I told him I was going to read all 10 pages I had to write to send it in, so he should listen to it, but...
10?
That's because he is so special and so dedicated to volunteering and making sure that our community is improved and better off. And not just with Keep Liberty Beautiful, we also talked about his other accomplishments that he had during his making Liberty County his home back in 1977. So you know, I must have had a lot since I came here in 1977. But he was an army brat. This was a station that his father was here at Fort Stewart. That's what brought him here. Ever since he was in high school, he had a leadership role in something. He was the president of something or part of some type of community club. He married his lovely bride Lisa. How long you been married?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Maybe I shouldn't have put him on the spot. I'm sorry. I had to answer.
Read the script. Read the script.
I know. I'm sorry. He was a part of Georgia Power. That's how we got him in Keep Liberty Beautiful. He, every year, he volunteered for over 200 hours. We couldn't pay him enough, every year. Not just one, not just last year, but almost every year. And I think 200 is being very generous. It's over that every year. And he never complains about helping out at our chipper. I don't think we could do our bring one for the chipper event without him being, being the lead in that, especially with Georgia Power doing the, providing the manpower and the chipper. We couldn't chip without the chipper. And it's donated. It's something that we didn't have to pay for, and I hope Georgia Power will still keep doing it also. But Willie is, has been on the executive board. He was a very good asset to Sarah Squada. And when she left, he did run and decided to stay, thank the Lord. And he has always been by my side and our Keep Liberty Beautiful community. So we would like to present to him the Lady Bird Award. And this is not just a county award or a state award. This is a national award from Keep America Beautiful. So this is around the world because now Keep America Beautiful is around the world. It's not just here in the United States. So I thought, hopefully, he's very proud of it. I'm not sure if...
You feel, y'all?
Yes, it is. So I'm not sure if he wanted to say a couple things?
I know he doesn't, but this is you. I am privileged and honored to receive this. I was just amazed that they turned my name in, and even more shocked that I won. So I love doing this kind of stuff and teaching the kids, getting the community involved. So, thank y'all.
Mr. Cato, we were just talking in the back about some upcoming recognitions we're going to do for some of our athletes here in Liberty County. And we want to make room on our agenda for them, just to reward them for their, for their hard work and dedication. So how dare us have a national winner? And a trailblazer being the first male to win it. And us not give him his due diligence? We can't do that. So that, that don't make us proud. That makes us happy, y'all. Liberty County proud. We're proud of you, man. Come stand behind us for our Kodak moment. You can't, commissioners, will we get together and gather around him?
Mr. Chairman, before Willie sits down, he, he and I worked together for a number of years at Georgia Power. And he has been able to work under four different managers, Lamar Smoak, Terry Reeves, Steve Allen, and Robert Stokes. And they supported him. He was a pointee on the Liberty County Fire Authority when we had it. He was my pointee in the district, and he always did a good job. You ask how long he's been married to Lisa, he's been married to her as long as he's known him.
I'm here.
Tighten up, tighten up. Small bust. Tighten up, small bust.
If I can't see you...
Can you see me?
If you can't see me, I can't see you. I think that's how they sing it.
All right.
Check his feet.
Someone said the other day, "It's not original." I borrowed it, sir. We are the community of champions. Proud of you, Mr. Cato, once again. Thank you for your service. All righty, we will transition now. Have some more supervisors who will complete the UGA.
We do. We have one other person that came through at the same time, was unable to be with us last time. It's Michelle Caraballo, is, took the University of Georgia class and basically succeeded in that.
Did you say, I forgot?
No. No, they didn't say that. You go. Come up, come up here. Come on around. We're gonna, yeah, come, come, come up here. Let's give her her due respect.
He's gonna help me down. He's gonna push me down. I mean, they didn't invite me last time. They go push me down the stairs. I'm just kidding.
Making it up.
I'm making it up as I go.
I think you can see me.
Mr. Walton, where are you?
Where? Come on.
Get in here.
There you go.
There you go.
All right, y'all looking good? One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
All right, great. Congratulations.
Justin's gonna open his mouth.
You're not gonna push me down.
Just gonna open his mouth.
There you go.
You make him an usher.
Chivalry is not dead.
Thank you, and congratulations again. Financial report, Ms. Caraballo.
Money, money, money.
Okay. All right, everybody should have received their April financial report. We just finished closing the month of April this week. So let me highlight for you where we are. Got two more months left in the fiscal year, May and June. We're chugging, chugging right along. We have actually, in total, exceeded collections on our revenues so far. Well, we're almost right at 100%. We're about $5,000 short of our total budgeted revenue, so we're doing really well. Expenditures, we're right on target. We're at 83%. That's exactly where we need to be. So far to date, we're about $6,000 over and above, revenues over and above expenditures at the end of April, so sitting, sitting very well. At the end of April, there is approximately 7.4 months' worth of operational expenditures in your undesignated and unreserved fund balance. This time last year, you were at 6.8 months, so you're a little ahead of the game where you were last year.
You want to stop now?
There are a couple of departments that continue to run ahead of a schedule or have exhausted their budget. And I, after we finish this report, I have a budget amendment for you, hopefully, that will bring all of that back in line. Elections, as you know, they exhausted their budget. They're one of the departments on this report. Tax commissioner running slightly ahead of schedule. I don't expect him to run over at the end of the year, but he's running a little ahead of schedule on, on a few different things. His overtime and his technical services. And then he also had some computers that he had to purchase that were not originally budgeted. As you know, risk management, that's where we budget all of our insurance and our pension shortfall. That is on the budget amendment for you as well.
Let me say this, Kim, if I may, for the tax commission, and not because of the brothers here either. His budget generally runs so mean and lean that anything like this...
Yes, any little thing.
Is going on here. But we just appreciate his diligence and how he presents his budget.
Yes.
So when these things happen, you know, you don't mind giving him the checkmark because every year, he, he runs a very lean and mean...
He really does, yes. Government buildings running slightly ahead of schedule too because of an unbudgeted item for the upgrade of the security system at the Justice Center. That will also be on that budget amendment. Sheriff's Department, vice control, and law enforcement training, all of these budgets are running ahead of schedule in various line items. And those departments as well are on this budget amendment. As you know, we've been tracking their expenses, especially with the taking on 17 new employees and some of that, I guess, startup gear and, and vehicles and equipment that are needed for those 17 deputies. So the Sheriff's Department is also going to be part of this budget amendment that I present. And of course, as you know, we did not budget for the census coordinator, but we went ahead and held her over. That'll be on there too. And then the other financing uses, that is where we took in the loan for the fire station, the $600,000 loan for the fire station. And then we had to transfer that out over into SPOLOST to help with the construction of that fire station.
And let's remind everybody too that the, the funds for the census coordinator is shared among several partners.
That's correct.
It's not just Liberty County Board of Communities.
That's correct. So in that budget amendment, you'll see a little bit of expense and, and revenue for that. Your solid waste operations running very well. They've actually achieved about 98% of their total budgeted revenue so far and are about 80% of their budgeted expenditures. Right now, they've got a small net income of $604,000. I do expect that to drop a little bit when we post the year-end depreciation and post-closure expense, when we do that true-up. And then in solid waste, there is one department, solid waste disposal, that's running slightly ahead of schedule. And that's because of the haul and waste contract that we have for the disposal of all the, of all our garbage with Broadhurst Environmental, but, and for the cost study that we had that was not originally budgeted. All of your special revenue funds, 911, victim witness, child support, recreation and record service center, all operating within their, below their budget right now, so tracking just well. Sales tax and T-SPOLOST, I mean, hit it out of the park in April. We actually received $1.1 million in SPOLOST revenue in April. That's, that's huge. I mean, that, that's, that's more than we got during the holiday time. So people are definitely spending that stimulus or that CARES money or rescue money or whatever you want to call it. They're spending it because we're seeing it. So that, that's good. In total, to date, we're about $1.7 million ahead of schedule to collect that $54 million. So we might actually top out if collections continue at this rate because we only have until March 2023 for this sales tax program. And right now, we're tracking to actually receive more than the $54 million. So we're right on target. T-SPOLOST was phenomenal too. We received over $1 million in T-SPOLOST. So that's, that's coming in great too. And that's all I have for your monthly report unless somebody has something specific they need to...
You know, the question was raised, I forgot who raised it during the budget session about SPOLOST and use of SPOLOST funds. And you all may remember, we discussed, you know, if, when it comes to a lot of our capital projects, we couldn't do it without SPOLOST.
Yeah.
So you have a choice. Either you have your sale tax where everybody participates and it's not property tax, where it goes into a fund that funds a lot of your capital needs, i.e. air conditioning units.
Did you see me over there fanning?
I'm not talking about fluffing, fluffing. I'm talking about basic needs.
Right.
So if you didn't have SPOLOST take care of that, it had to come from your general fund, which of course comes from your property taxes. So this, once again, is a good example of how this works for our community with SPOLOST. And then of course, now T-SPOLOST, we do a lot of our...
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure projects. I just want to make that clear because...
I totally agree. Because all, everybody pays SPOLOST.
Yeah.
Including visitors who pass through, which is huge.
Yeah.
As opposed to just the property owners supporting it.
I wish, that's the way we could correlate, Joey, how far back we'd be without having SPOLOST to help us with a lot of the projects that we have. And we'd be like a community from the 1970s.
Beverly Hillbillies.
Yeah, it, yeah. I just want the public to understand how that works.
It's huge.
How that works.
It's huge, and it's a huge property tax relief as well. Because like you said, the burden then is not put on the property owners. It's shared by everybody in the community, plus people who pass through. So it, it is significant.
Yeah. A lot of roads that are paved now would still be dirt.
And this is our sixth sales tax we're in, six programs. So that's, that speaks volumes about...
Speaks volumes.
Mr. Chairman, I said, I just wanted to ask a question of, Kim and Joey, Broadhurst Environmental, is that a bid?
Actually, it was, trying to think, last time we did proposals on it, it's been several years, maybe three years ago. And then it's automatic renewal up to, I think, a three-year period, then it expires. It, I'll, I'll look at it and see.
I believe there's a slight escalation cost in there each year.
Correct. See, it's, yeah.
Well, we were talking the other day in our, in our little workshop we had, we, we're looking at the number of homes, added more homes. And I mean, we're gonna have to, this number here, I mean, it's obvious we're gonna have to do something.
Well, I think that's one of the reasons we did the cost study, the, the solid waste cost study, is to make sure, because we just, this month, increased the commercial rates and the new assessment rates are going out too. So that's one of the reasons that we went ahead and you adopted the new cost rates for both commercial clients and citizens who get that billed on their property tax. So yes, we're completely prepared for that.
Okay, and I know we're on Facebook Live, and I had a question posed to me and really didn't know how to answer it. Come out of Walmart the other day and a fellow stopped me and he said, "I've got my receipt here and it shows an 8% tax and a 4% tax." And he said, "Explain to me what that is." And I'm gonna let you explain what it is.
So the 8% tax is your local sales tax. But if he bought food items in Walmart, those food items, those grocery items, edible, consumable items like that, are not taxed at 8% like if you were to buy a t-shirt. So, and then even at the gas pump, if you buy gas, that's not 8%, that's 7%. So you're gonna have the state, which I think is 4%...
Four.
Across everything. And then you've got the one penny for the local option sales tax, one penny for the special purpose local option sales tax, and one penny for the T-S, the E-SPOLOST, and one penny for the T-SPOLOST.
That makes our total...
And that's the total eight.
Eight.
That's right. But food, food is only, right.
Well, and that was, you know, when we finally got through, I was saying, we got the, you know, the new taxes that was in there, but I couldn't go ahead and elaborate everything that I really want to tell him. So maybe there's people that are noticing their receipts when they get it, it's got 8% tax and it's got underneath that 4% tax.
Right. And before T-SPOLOST kicked in, it would always be 7% tax and 4% tax. And a couple of years ago, few years ago, when SPOLOST didn't pass, it was 4% and 6%. Then it went back up to 7 when sales tax 6 came in.
If I remember correctly, I'm just putting it in generic terms, a good portion of the counties in Georgia are at the 8%.
Yes.
I'm just being conservative.
That's correct.
I want to give you, exactly, but I know a good portion of the counties in Georgia...
Yes.
Right where we are.
That's correct.
Right where we are. If not, they're trying to get where we are.
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Any more questions on the monthly report before I go on to your...
Put a bow on it. Call it Christmas.
That's right. Okay, so I, I put on your, your desk a proposed budget amendment. So usually, in the past, if I've ever brought a budget amendment to you, it's usually been expenses that were covered by something very specific, either fund balance or a lease agreement or, or a funding source of some type. Fiscal year 2021 has really been very different as far as our revenues go. And I don't think anybody could have imagined how they, how they actually turned out to be. So I've got this broken out between revenues and expenses. And instead of, we, we knew that we had unbudgeted expenses, several items. But in doing, in looking at our revenues, I realized that there are several revenues that are tracking ahead of schedule and a few that are not going to make their budget. So the first section actually amends your revenues. So you see several revenues, and, and we talked about these in our budget session. You talked about how we work through the budget. TAVT tracking higher. Intangible reporting, tracking much higher. Local option sales tra, tax, tracking much higher. So several of these up top here, probably all the way down to the prisoner housing, are tracking higher or lower than we originally budgeted. And then from the wellness grant on down, the wellness grant was something that we did not budget, that we received. The census charges, as you mentioned, those are charges that we billed those other municipalities. The child support rent, we just did not budget it. The workers' comp refund, that's an actual check that we got. The public defender refund, that's an actual check that we got. And then the fire station loan that I mentioned. So all of those revenues net together to about $3.1 million additional revenue. Then when you look down at the expenses, three of those departments are estimated. And we went through a very detailed analysis to try and come up collectively to what we need. Now, we knew elections have, has exhausted their budget. We knew why. So we estimate to make their budget whole and for them to finish out the rest of the year, we'll take about $349,500. The pension shortfall, that's a true dollar amount that we've already sent in. That's not an estimate. Government buildings, that was for the security system update over at the Justice Center. That's a actual cost that we've already paid. The sheriff's departments collectively, there are seven departments that he has, collectively looking at all of his expenses, and each department could have anywhere from 15 line items to 40 line items. So what I did is I went through each department and each category, whether it's personnel services, benefits, purchase services, supplies, capital needs. We went through and we analyzed every line item to see where they are right now and what we anticipate that they need to get them through the end of the year. Collectively, they're gonna need about $433,000. The street sweeper, that's, that's a cost. You already knew that. You approved that. We, we purchased that. The wellness grant, as I mentioned, we got that grant, so here's the matching expenses. Here's your census coordinator expenses. The expenses were 7,900. We received back 4720 from those other municipalities. The transfer out the fire station, you heard me mention that in your report, that's the 598,000 that the general fund had to transfer out. And then your estimated merit for employees. Now, we just finalized that number, and we, we talked about that during our budget process, that all departments had an opportunity to evaluate all of their full-time employees who had been in that position for a year. We got a lot of evaluations, and some of those evaluations actually were done on people who had already been promoted or who already had received merit or even were part-time or had not been in their position for 12 months. So after we went through those, calculated what everything would need, because you could get, you could score from a three, well, you could actually score from a zero to a five. But a three to a five actually provided a merit for that employee, either one step or two step. So when we did the calculations, if we award this merit, either one step or two step, to that select group of people that had a successful evaluation, that had been in their position for at least 12 months without having a merit already, it would cost the county about $30,000 for this year. So collectively, that is your budget amendment. It's about, it's $3,107,522 to amend revenues and expenses, but you are not using any fund balance to cover any of these.
Okay.
And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions about it, or...
Mr. Chairman, I had a question. On the, looking back at the finance report and then looking at the sheriff's department amendment.
Mm-hmm.
So he hasn't, he's only over like $96,000 right now, but he's looking to, we've only got one more month?
So, so you're only looking at $3,300.
Yeah, okay, so that's what, that's what I was getting to. This is for...
$3,300, $3,320, $3,321, $3,326, $3,350, $3,393, and $3,395 collectively. Seven. Seven departments. And like I said, throughout those seven departments, there's been a lot of movement originally. And I'll just give you, for example, originally, I believe that there was maybe eight or nine people budgeted in narcotics and maybe 12 in detectives or vice. eight or nine people budgeted in narcotics and maybe 12 in detectives or vice, and now it's kind of flip-flopped, and now they're down to like seven, six or seven in narcotics and maybe 16 in detectives. So there's some movement that's happened, and so there are some line items that are running way over, and then some line items that will have a slight savings. So this, the, the $433,000 takes into account all seven departments, all line items, moving money around to kind of smooth everything out, and they will still need $433,000 to finish them out the rest of the year.
Okay, and the other was, and I'm glad you made that point about combining those, because whenever I was just looking back and.
Yeah, because he's.
Budget book up here.
Right.
So I was looking back at the tax revenue and it looked real good until you probably add up all the, all those other numbers there.
Right.
Or, or line items, and then that's where you got the 28 million or whatever.
That's correct. That's correct. That's just not property taxes. That's a whole, that, that, that is a summary. So there's probably, in that one line item, there's probably 15, 16.
Yeah.
Different accounts that roll up to that, yes.
Well, I thought, it looks real good anyway.
It does look good.
You know, so I'm glad that we bumped that up a little bit on our budget.
Yes.
Tax, so it looks good there, so I'm a little bit more comfortable with that.
I think it's gonna hold out. I think it's gonna hold out.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Yes, thanks, Connor. Kim, now, on this, this expenses for the sheriff's department, this $433,000, is that, that amount, is that from that first meeting in January where the sheriff came in and said that he needed additional staff? That's where that number is derived from?
That's part of it, yes. Because if you actually took the full cost of those 17 individuals for one year, I mean, for six months, it's probably more than that, but because we used savings and other line items and because there have been some turnover and some vacancies that have created other savings, that's why it's down to 433.
And, and I guess my other question would be, let's say that, that meeting in January where the new sheriff administration came in, let's say they, they don't, we don't have that meeting, there would be no number there, or it'd be less.
Or, it would probably be less, because they wouldn't have those 17 new people that you authorized, that's correct, I would agree with that.
And, and you know, and I'm looking at this now, elections, I mean, that's the hand we were dealt, I mean, you know, with the election.
The COVID restrictions and then those extra audits.
Right, right, yeah.
I mean, everything that they had to do.
Yeah, I, I mean, and that's the first time we ever went through something like that, so that's, you know, that's a given.
Two audits, I think.
The pension shortfall, that's, that's the same thing.
Second year, yes.
But, but you know, when I look at these other ones, you know, the, and I think when the, when the sheriff came down back in January and, and we discussed it, that presentation that him and his leadership did, it was kind of, it was brought on us, kind of spurred a moment, I mean, we walked in and, and I think something happened with the audio or the video or something, and, and we took a break, and while that was happening, they were still printing reports, because I know, I got a report that was still warm, I mean, it was brand new. So we, we didn't have a chance to look at it, but it was kind of given to us, we didn't have a chance to lull over that we could have, I guess we could have.
Tabled that.
In hindsight, yeah, that's, I wish that we did, but we didn't. And, and I think when they walked out of here, they kind of went and started bringing in people like the, right after they got to the cars, you know, almost. But, and I, and I thought about, I, I know the, the commissioners would know that after that was over, you know, we had some back and forth, and I, I think at the time, whatever was decided, I do remember, and this might have been Commissioner Jones' first meeting, he, I think he was the only one that.
Voted no.
Yeah, that voted no. And I had some, not, not second thoughts, 10 thoughts after that, and I probably wished that I would have did the same. And, because that's, that's not really a, a hand that we were dealt, that's kind of something that was, you know, kind of like a wish, you know, I, I need to do this today or else, and I, I, I don't, I didn't agree with it after, after that meeting, and, and I don't agree with it now, and that's, that's just my thought on that. So I, I understand all this other stuff that's on here that, that we, and we'll vote on it today, but I just can't, I can't support that, I can't. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, I wanted to ask Kim a question, just to make sure that, to piggyback on what Commissioner Gillard had said on the meeting, we, and I believe you walked up to me and you said, "I'm glad you mentioned that this was jailers," and we hired, how many?
Ten.
And I see in the revenues that we're missing $75,000 in prisoner housing, so I'm just wondering, do we have that many less prisoners that we need 10 more?
I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm saying the amount that we originally budgeted to receive in prisoner housing is not going to make.
So.
So that's why I'm decreasing that revenue line item, because I know we're not going to make $800,000 in prisoner housing, we're gonna make $725,000.
But we're gonna have 10, we're gonna have 10 more jailers.
I would hope that those 10 jailers, once fully trained and, and everything, it would decrease the overtime in the jail that is higher than it's ever been.
Well, man, we didn't discuss overtime with them on that, I, I don't know, you know, anything about that, I just noticed that that prisoner housing amount was, you know, it's in the red and along, I mean, I understand, if you don't cut timber, you don't go and get the timber tax, I understand personal property, but you know, I guess, they're guessing that we're gonna have $75,000 extra, or $75,000 extra dollars because of housing prisoners, and on down a little bit more, we see what is known as marshal transport fee, $45,000.
Yep, we did not budget anything for marshal transport fee, and we have received $42,000.
Now, that is just federal in prisoners that we.
That's my understanding, and they contract, they have a separate contract with the sheriff and the jail for that, and so they pay them and then the jail turns that money over. So we never originally budgeted anything. So while we're decreasing the prisoner housing revenue that we anticipate receiving, we're increasing the marshal transport fee. Now, prisoner housing, it, it really fluctuates, and, and it has to do with the number of prisoners in the jail and who those prisoners belong to, whether they belong to City of Heinzville, whether they belong to Fort Stewart, whether they belong, whether they're federal prisoners, whether they belong to Walthiville, Flemington, whoever, and how much those entities pay towards prisoner housing. I mean, I, I've said for a while that I think that prisoner housing contract needs to be redone, I'm not sure we can get into that here.
I, I know there was a lot of things talked about that night as far as this, and then I know there was some talk about, Joey, correct me, we're adding on another pod to house more prisoners when, right now, we're looking at, we're $75,000, so I, I'm just.
Well, if there are prisoners, we don't get anything for them. So if, if the mix of prisoners is such that they're county prisoners, then, yeah.
But it's an expense.
It's an expense.
Right.
What I'm doing is I'm reducing the revenue that we receive from the other entities that we hold prisoners for, for, whether it's Long County, Wayne County, City of Heinzville, Walthiville, the Marshals. So if the mix of prisoners is more county prisoners, then other types of prisoners, then we get less prisoner housing fee.
Right.
And honestly, I don't, I don't know how you.
It's hard to.
It, it is hard to, and you could, you, if you look in your budget book, under the prisoner housing line item, you can look at the last five years and see how it's fluctuated. And there's some years it's over $800,000, there's some years it's less than $600,000.
Well, that was my question, are we budgeting enough or are we budgeting too much?
We budgeted too much, that's why I'm reducing it.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, that's, that's all I, all I want to make sure of that.
Right, because I just don't feel like we're gonna come in at where we budgeted.
Right, I just want to make sure that we're doing what needs to be done, and if they're not, if it's not paying off, then we need to be looking at just what you said, reassess that, that housing.
I think we needed that anyway, regardless.
We're doing what we can as best we can, because you're right, when we, several years ago, that was a revenue maker.
Right.
Then all of a sudden, several years ago, it, yeah.
We lost it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's when they opened the new wing in, in Chatham.
Yes.
And, and that sheriff got the contract for all the.
And now we're getting some of it.
We're getting a little bit.
Little bit of it back.
A little bit back, that's correct.
It's a moving target, really.
Well, I, I mean, to, to me, it's just kind of like, you know, that, that's a business that somebody may want to be in, but I don't know that it's healthy for us to say, we're, we're interested in housing the prisoners, I mean, I'm just that way about it, I mean, it's kind of like saying, well, this is what we collected from fines and forfeitures, where, you know, that's good with some people, but you know, it's not always, I don't want people to assume that that's all you're gonna do is when you come into town is get.
Right.
Rode up and get.
And unfortunately, you, you are tasked with providing the jail.
Right, I understand that, that's why I'm saying, if the money's, if we're not budgeting, then we need to budget, if we're budgeting more, then, I mean, of course, we, we try to correct it there, but I was just unsure of that number right there, and it's just kind of like the damaged property, that's a reimbursement, but do we know what property that was?
So, again, that's a moving target, and, and we put that in there because it looked like the last four years, we had actually gotten more than that, but now we're, we've got, we've got two months left and we're not gonna make that, so nobody's damaged our property, which is a good thing.
Yes, it's usually something, I think what happened there is a slowdown in court cases, because it's usually fines that are assessed back to affected parties in a court case, and that's how, if we have cars that are damaged or whatever, the judge will assign a repayment through probation, and that, that tells me that there weren't as many court cases for reassignment of money, now some of that may come back in later, but, you know, that, that's probably.
Well, I, I mean, I've looked at these things, just like all the other commissioners have, it's just, you know, you go down through there and you don't have that many items that are in the red, and, and, you know, that's something that we, when you look at it in the revenue side, you're saying, well, that's a shortfall, I mean, we discussed timber taxes, I, I'm still not convinced that that is a figure now, I mean, I'm just gonna tell you.
I'm with you on that.
I, I mean, I, I just.
Right, I, I would agree with you, but we, we can only budget what we know we're going to receive, and, and we thought we would receive $100,000, and we haven't, and it doesn't look like we're going to.
And if it's any consolation to you, I did read through the last legislation session that the, the, our sister brother in Atlanta also looking at the timber tax that I was collecting, trying to put some more teeth into it.
There's, yeah.
It's not just us, it's happening everywhere.
And I think Joey made a good point that, you know, you have, you don't have to pay right when you cut it if you have other to cut, like whatever your parcel or your lot is, you, you can have this much, but if you only cut that much, you don't have to pay until you cut the rest of it. So it could be another year or two before you cut anymore, and then people lose track and then they slip through the cracks. So I agree.
And that's something we need to.
It needs to be fixed.
Well, yeah, I mean, you, you can have somebody put land in conservation and cut 20 acres this year, 20 acres the next year, before you know it, you know, you've got five years down the road and we, we haven't got anything for it. We, it's even been, I mean, it's still gonna be in conservation and it's tax-deferred for us as far as adblocking, but I mean, we still ought to be trying to, and I know we had things put in place, you know, with.
We tried.
The whole board did, trying to.
We beefed it up.
Make this thing happen, but we need to, I mean, that's what we, you know, Liberty County was a timber-growing community, and we had the paper mill and things like that, but, you know, right now, we can all leave here and drive the spots that 100 acres has been cut, ain't a tree on it but something that come from Lowe's. That's all I'm gonna say about it, I'm sorry, sir.
No, 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 I'm glad you're looking.
We don't have to dip into fund balance, too.
Yeah, and I guess that was, that was the thing I was glad about, is that none of this is covered by fund balance, and even though we are taking down some revenues, where, you know, we're coming back off of some of them, most of them, most of them, we're increasing, so we're able to cover those expenses, which is really good, because if I came before you and said, "Okay, we're gonna decrease six revenue line items, and then we're also gonna cover everything else by fund balance," that, that would be an issue.
Well, I really want to compliment this commission for being good stewards, and I want to compliment you, Kim, for the diligent job you do.
Thank you.
Brown, you and your team, you know, without having done that, we wouldn't be where we are now, you know, you're right, it'd be a whole different cell, whole different cell, so thank you guys for being the watchdogs. And commissioners, we will continue to be the watchdogs as much as we can, this whole timber thing, you've been talking about that ever since I've known you. You know?
Yeah, you have.
But I did read that all over state, they're trying to find a way to better process that, so it doesn't fall through the cracks, so, so it's just where we are.
You have a question or a comment, sir?
No, the only thing I can say is, is like Commissioner Stevens and of course Commissioner John Moes, you know, it may come to where we got to put somebody out here to, to, to look at this to make sure, I mean, it's.
Timber patrol.
Well, I mean, we got a dumpster deputy, so we ought to have somebody, I mean, we can tell when he's throwing trash out, we ought to be able to find out somebody cutting a load of pulpwood or logs anyhow, okay. All right.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, we, we need, yes, sir, I am.
Need a motion?
Need a motion.
Need a motion to amend, you want to do the revenue.
Amend the fiscal year 2021 budget.
As Ms. Kim Clark can say, that's my motion.
Motion of the second May, with all the duly noted comments from each commissioner that I want to express it, all those are.
Everybody needs to make, I mean, we are pretty much on target then.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, in further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Those opposed. All right. Thank you, Kim, appreciate you again.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Now, unless she finds out, she also has to be the, the bad guy sometimes.
Yeah.
Had to rustle them up.
I want to remind everybody that your June 1st meeting is your public hearing on the fiscal year 2022 budget.
Do we have a, is it out for public view?
It's, yes, in the, in the office.
I saw it in today's, I saw it in today's current.
The, the advertisement, it's just, it's just like this.
I want a copy.
Okay, and, and that one's kind of still a, a work in process, and just to, you know, because it's happened before in the past, we'll have our public hearing so that the public can come and speak on the budget and ask questions, but that doesn't have to be your final version that you adopt, because you're gonna adopt it at your mid-month meeting in June, but the public hearing, it, we're, we're still work in progress.
Adopted version.
Right.
Adopted, that's the one I want. It'd be, it'd be about that size?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think it'd be good for all of us to have that one since it's done.
Okay, I think that'd be a great idea.
Mr. Chairman, also, before Kim, you leave, and I know we, we're through voting on this thing, but your merit for employees, that's estimates. I mean, what, how many number of employees are you talking about?
I don't know if I brought that with me. I don't think I brought that with me.
I know you had.
Oh, yes, I did.
That was only for.
You revised it, I remember that.
Golly.
The merit.
A hundred and.
About a month.
One month for.
This is for your three weeks.
To finish out this fiscal year, it was.
There'll be three pay periods.
Yeah, the pay period.
Three pay periods, yes.
Three pay periods.
They'll, they'll, well, they'll actually receive it on their June 4th paycheck, so you'll have the June 4th and then the mid-June, and then the July 2nd, which we're actually gonna flip back into.
So you got, how many approximately?
I wanna, I wanna say it was like 100 and 30.
You revised it.
140. I don't think, yeah, I can go, I can run, go get you.
You got 140, and the total merit for is gonna be that number right there?
Just to finish out this.
Just, just for the three pay period.
Right, right.
Because you remember, the merit was awarded in one or two-step increments, and each step is only 2%. So if you make $14 an hour, you'll make 14 and 2%.
So, but, I mean, right now, we know that will be increased, right, Joey, because of federal law, putting your minimum wage up?
No, sir.
No, sir.
You won't affect the minimum wage.
No, that won't affect that.
It won't? It won't affect the minimum wage?
We don't, do we have employees on minimum wage?
No.
We, please, we got a scale higher than that?
Yeah, our scale starts a little bit higher, a little bit higher.
Just a little bit.
Not much, but a little bit.
Well, I've said it, and I want to say it one more time. Next year, we start our budget, that's the first thing that needs to come out the chute, or don't call me. I want us to make sure that that is the first thing.
Yeah, so your budget that is on the table for adoption for next year already includes the go...
It does.
Right.
For that and everything else, so you're, yes, sir, you're big.
We've had people that, and y'all are products of it, I mean, you know, and this gentleman here that's doing the, Clint and all of them, I mean, y'all, you know, every day, we got to see you with that ugly mask on. But y'all were here, and I mean, that right there needs to be, along with other folks, it needs to be recognized. I mean, it goes a lot of times unnoticed and unappreciated, but I appreciate what y'all did, and I think that needs to be top of our list. And if we got to do without something else in another department, well, so be it.
So, you know, you were, and I know thirty thousand dollars seems like it's little, but if you think about it, somebody who makes fourteen fifty-nine an hour, if they get a one-step, two percent increase, they'll make fourteen eighty-eight an hour. It's only a twenty-nine cent raise for eighty hours, three pay periods, so two hundred and forty hours times the twenty-nine cents. And again, people are going to make anywhere from, I don't know, twelve dollars an hour all the way up to forty-five dollars an hour, you know, within those hundred and thirty, hundred and forty people. So, that's why it's, you know, thirty thousand doesn't seem like a lot, but that's because some of it's only, you know, thirty cents.
I can tell you, it ain't a lot.
No, it's not a lot.
I mean, I'm just be right up front with you, I'm shocked that it's out of amount.
Well...
I mean, I just, we'll say that, and that's the end of it, but it needs to be, we need to look at that.
It's in there.
All right.
Just one more question. We have someone making less than fifteen dollars an hour?
Less than fifteen dollars an hour? Oh, we have a whole bunch of people making less than fifteen dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Whole bunch of people.
Yeah, we need to look at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Commissioner Frazier, I mean, I'm not sure whether to start you guys off at where you were gainfully employed, but a lot of places that don't have, that don't start with that kind of...
With all due respect, I guess for the last two meetings, everyone's talking about me being employed out there, but I'm also a business owner. And I'm telling you, who could live off of less than that? I'm just saying that. I'm a business owner first, before I'm gangly.
And if they were here, they would tell you a lot of people are.
Okay.
They may not have the finances or the finances, but a lot of people are not making fifteen dollars an hour.
Mom and daddy.
Well, I know we have a...
What I'm saying is working for them.
I can't say, and I can't even say it's coming from a healthcare background, we had a lot of people who weren't at that level.
And that was a scale established by UGA.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, well, they need to look at my scales.
Not outside the norm.
They didn't even go to a bowl game this year.
And remember, too, we have our, during them, they do our salary survey. People's at the park.
I get it, what I'm saying is...
Just receive it then.
Let's, 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 let's just be honest, though. I mean, what, twelve dollars an hour times forty, what is that?
Four eighty.
Okay, four eighty, then we subtract... I mean, insurance.
And your insurance.
Oh, right. And you telling me that we're proud of that? Okay.
Anything else for him?
Okay, I'm sorry for opening up that can.
Whoever's making that, tell them I'm hiring.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Engineering, Mr. Long.
I'm hiring.
I know.
Good afternoon.
Hello, sir.
That's why I can talk a little bit better. If you don't mind, everybody has a copy of my report, I'm going to go a little out of order, if you don't mind. The last item that I have on my report is a request that Mr. Brown received for a water system extension. Mr. Brown received a water system extension request for a subdivision that's planned out on 196 West. It'd be about a hundred and fifty-five lots, and they would like to extend the water system out.
Is that west or east?
West.
West.
East.
East.
East, yeah.
I need the border.
I said west. I'm directionally challenged today, I guess, it should be east. So, I apologize, this is a layout from ME SAC for the hundred and fifty-five lots. And this is a general location for where it is. This is Highway eighty-four, this is 196 East. Willie Dixon Road is right there, I believe. So, what they would be doing is connecting to our water system here on this side of the road, extending it down into their subdivision and go through there. We did review the request, we did review our current water system and our current water system capabilities, and we are recommending that the developer be allowed to extend the water system to the proposed subdivision, contingent upon approval of the zoning, the development plan, the construction plans, water system extension, go through the whole review process to make sure, and that these items would be done at the cost of the developer. But that would get us out there with another hundred and fifty-five lots, with another hundred and fifty-five customers, which we do need. So, this is... Sorry, just wanted to ask a question, I didn't mean to...
I'm not going to stop you right now, I'm going to go ahead.
And I'm good with this one.
I'm good with this, all right. Speak to this, Mr. Brown, as far as the water system and what this do for us?
All in favor, sir. No, it would be great, we do need to increase customer demand on the system. As Ms. Long said, the system's perfectly capable, got the capacity to handle it. Don't see any downside, only positives.
This will be the expense of the developer?
Yes, sir.
For the fire hydrants and everything?
Yes, sir.
Winter winner chicken dinner.
This is, Marcus, this is yours?
Yes, sir.
What? And I know Commissioner Stevens remembers this quite well, because me and him talked about it, and I really wasn't sure that we ever got back, but when it leaves eighty-four, what size is that?
Ten inch.
All the way to...
So, right now, we have a ten-inch line that comes down this side of the road. It crosses over to six, and it goes six inches down to Willie Dixon. What they would do is they connect on this side of the road and then extend the ten down to their site.
Will that be a eight or a ten?
Ten.
Ten?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
They'll meet our fire flow demands.
Now, another question on that, Marcus, that's a state route, right? So, it would be on the state's right-of-way? Not, nothing to do with us, I mean, as far as where it's put at, if it'll be hours later on, and Woodrow's happening, I guess we'll maintain it, but will we be, what's the liability there? Nothing?
Very little exposure until you guys accept it as your utility.
So, it will, they will install it and do everything as if it, I mean, it will be Liberty County. So, they will install it per Liberty County requirements and per what we need for our system. I think in my recommendation, I said that it'd be done to the benefit of Liberty County. So, what happens is, there is a permit process for installing the utilities inside a Georgia DOT right-of-way. So, they'll have to get the correct permit to install it. They do have requirements of where it goes within their right-of-way. Will meet all those requirements, and he'll also have to meet, you know, the depth and the placement of it, which is pretty much standard practice for the engineering and putting these water systems.
So, how many hydrants is already on that road, on that state route?
I don't remember how many hydrants are on that state route, but they're about every six to eight hundred feet somewhere along that...
I think it's about six out there already.
There's several out there already.
All right, now, this is going to be the question that I've, it's already been asked me, and that's why I want to know. In the beginning, Joey, you had to sign up. And if you didn't sign up, there was an issue with us coming back and relocating. Let's just say that you had other businesses there, and they said, nope, I don't want to get involved in it. But, and you said, well, if you do, this is going to be the cost. A brand-new subdivision, what do we do there? Is it...
They're all hooked up.
It'll be all to them, so, I mean, that's kind of the offset with the developer punishing the cost, but we won't actually, you know, the developer run the water in the subdivision, so that won't apply in this case. He'll run it all the way through.
Right.
And then those people will get water service from us. We will actually have some agreements with each customer inside that subdivision.
So, actually, they install the water system all the way up to the water meters.
Right.
So, and then it's inspected and improved and make sure, pressure test, do the whole testing of it, make sure everything's right, and then once it's accepted, then it becomes the county's water system. Now, when the builder gets ready to build a house, he goes, makes his connection at the meter, pays his impact fees and all the fees that he needs for the water system, and he runs his own water, his own line up to his house. So, we don't really have any expenditures or capital expenses directly, well, that's not the right way to say it, in this facility, you know, our impact fees that we charge cover the impact, the cost of the impact of the subdivision to our system.
So, that could be a domino effect right on down that road?
So, Trent, Trent, so, what, make sure I'm hearing it correct, I think I am. Like, when we first started the county water system, there was a fifty-dollar deposit.
Right.
First time to hook up, two fifty, then two fifty from the main line to the, to the meter box. But in this case, all of that goes away.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
The only thing, the only thing they'll pay you is the one-time account establishment charge, anything related to that, which is the tap-in and some of those fees, well, actually, developer will pay those, that'll be passed on.
So, actually...
It'll just be new account establishment, the deposit going forward.
So, actually, everyone within that circuit, within that highlighted area, right, they won't have a choice on water? It will be...
That's correct.
County water or whatever.
Actually, what happens is the lot sizes that they're requesting are dependent on having the community water system or the municipal water system.
Right.
So, they, they won't be able to get a permission to build a house unless they're on the water system.
That in your ordinance says that if water, if community water service is available, county water service, they have to use the county water service.
Okay.
They don't have an option for new development.
Now, that would put us, we should be maintaining, what, two forty-six or two forty-two now?
Uh, yeah, we're over two hundred now, so it'll go over three hundred.
Right, okay.
It'd build out.
So, if we can get this one going and then come back and still run on that Scriven Fault Road, we'll be well where we should be at?
Be good.
Okay.
Sure will, it'll help a lot. And provide them safe drinking.
Sir, Mr. Gillip.
Yeah, Trent, and I just want to, I'll just kind of piggyback on that and give some clarity. So, when they tap into the county's water line and they run it down into this development, every tap for every house, the developer is going to pay that impact fee, whatever that is, for each tap into that.
Yeah, they will...
For every, for every lot.
Every lot in the...
He would tap, when he tap into that line that runs by that lot, when he tap into that, there will be a fee for that. And establishing the account, as Joey said, would be for the homeowner, the person that lives in that house. But the developer, every time he tap into that eight-inch line that we run through that subdivision, he pays that fee, whatever that impact fee is.
Every time he taps the main line to go to the...
That's, right, okay. It's not the tap to run water down there, it's the tap, once that line is in there, every time he hit it, he has to pay that fee, whatever that fee is, okay?
All right, one other question.
And I'm just, just trying, where is Arcadia?
Arcadia subdivision.
Right, right there?
Right here.
Okay, and this new development is, I'll say upstream from Arcadia, and it, Joey just said that it won't have no impact on our system. If Arcadia down the line wanted to, you know, us to have, for them to have county water down there, they got their own system, they got a well or something down there?
Yes.
And if their well runs dry and they want it...
They have a system that serves...
Yeah, I know, it's self-supporting.
Little well, they got one little well, maybe two little wells right there.
But, and we know how wells work, it's an independent system, but if they want it to be on the county system, Joey, do you think that...
We do, and so, will this impact our system? Absolutely. But what I mentioned was, it won't, we have the capacity.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, though.
Yeah, we would do the same takeoff for Arcadia, we could do the same takeoff.
Okay.
And I can go ahead and tell you that we've got enough capacity that if Arcadia came...
If they wanted it, yeah, okay, okay, okay.
Joey, Trent, where's Willie Dixon at?
About right. I'm sorry, I got to get closer.
You had it, did you ask me?
Yes, it's right here.
Okay, if there's any other residents between that subdivision and Willie Dixon, and if they want to tie on, Joey, what, what would be the, how would you resolve that issue?
Willie, on the Willie Dixon side or on the other side?
Yeah, Willie Dixon side.
Well, then you'd be talking about having to bore or either extend what's already bored over to Willie Dixon, because there's a bore that goes over and serves Willie Dixon, as you know. I mean, they could, if there's any residents in there now, they could go ahead and...
If there's any...
If there's any on there now, they could.
Okay.
I was just...
But there's not, so, but yes, sir, this capacity's over there, it would be fine.
So, how, how would they receive, would they have to pay the fourteen seventy-five or what?
They would pay, actually, what they would have to do right now, it's just like a new, it's just like a, somebody putting a trailer on a vacant piece of property. They'd have to pay the tap fee plus the cost of extension of the line to the residents. Plus, plus the account setup fee.
Okay.
But, well, Joey, now, because the line would have run in front of that property, if they were going to put a double-wide in there, would they have to tap into the county's system or could they have their own well? They would have to?
They'd have to, they would have to have their, they would have to tap into the county system, which county water's available for sort of that part.
If it's, okay.
By the ordinance.
Okay.
By the ordinance. And we've given, the health department has a territory map that basically shows the service, the service system, and so if somebody comes to get a well permit for them, they're going to look and see before they issue a well permit.
It's county water.
You got to get, you got to get on...
You got to pay the impact fee and get county water.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, is this an action item or is this up for discussion?
I think, I think we just wanted to...
Want to share what...
Make sure we could go ahead and be working with the developer on seeing what the cost would be. But if the board doesn't, doesn't like it, I'm not sure that we want to put the developer through that.
Well, then, let's make it an action item, then.
I mean, that's, I mean, we put it out there to sell the water, I mean, I'm for that, I just, and I know that probably when it starts in there, I don't know who will police it, if it'll be you, Trent, or who will look after it, but, or Woodrow, but the going on out that way, Marcus, toward...
Arcadia.
Arcadia.
Yeah, toward Arcadia, let's just say on the road, we would probably go past his property and stub up in case, you know, where we'd be able to tie on and not be going in somebody's yard, is what I'm saying.
I think what you're saying is, take it from wherever his driveway is, just make sure...
Yeah, make sure it goes to the edge of that property and have it to where, if somebody else wants it, we can...
We can extend.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. At least down to where we can put another fire hydrant or something, you know.
Yeah, there's a note there that said that we would extend the water line to the other side of the last drive, wherever that is, I mean, this paper was having more than seventy-five lots, and there needing to be two drives.
Right.
So, the note says to extend it to the other side of the last drive, but if you guys want to approve it with that condition.
Well, I'm just thinking that if you ever did want to go that way, you wouldn't be having to dig up somebody else's yard. So, I mean, I'm not against this project, I'm just wanting to make sure that, oh, that going on, I wish we'd have went to the edge of the property, so, I mean, I would say that would be...
And that's not abnormal?
Well, yeah, I know, but sometimes if it's questions not asked, it's not asked.
Marcus, can you give me an idea of what kind of, one step further than this? Number one, like most commissioners, we really appreciate the growth going in that area. I'm, I'm, number one, like most commissions, we really appreciate the growth going in that area. So, you can tell Josh, we appreciate his work, but what's, what's he planning? What, what level of housing is he planning to do out there? Just out of curiosity?
Affordable, nah, I'm joking.
Okay. Happy-go's a good size for the county, okay. Uh, just out of curiosity, uh-
Yeah, I'm just, how many lots?
Hundred-and-fifty-five right now.
How many?
Hundred-and-fifty-five right now, but by the time he gets through-
A little city.
A little bit.
A little city.
There's more than, there's more going in there than there was in all the back of the house.
A little city. Let's, let's go, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was on, uh, ax, I guess, you and Mr. Brown, uh, what type of motion needs to be made on this?
Uh, let's see.
Approve the extension of the water system?
Well, I think just authorize, uh-
To move?
Authorize to move forward with the developer to utilize the system.
So, so move, Mr. Chair. All right, thank you. Then second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, motion is seconded. We authorize the developer to tap into the county water system. We certainly, as commissions, we appreciate the growth in unincorporated Liberty County, and, uh, we just ask that it be done well. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Those opposed, move forward, sir.
But, I will continue to ask for that right there, see, that's the transition.
All right. That's coming up in a few minutes. So, I'm gonna try to hit a few of these, uh, uh, different items as we get through. We got a couple of other items to discuss this and, uh, a bid opening. Um, Becker Street and Ollie Street, uh, Commissioner Gillis, we are ready to go for bid on that whenever you're ready to tell me to go.
Go ahead, Trent.
I need to hear those words. Okay.
Go ahead, Trent.
I got it. All right. Middle Park Fire Station, uh, we're getting, we're, we're about seventy-five percent through on that. Uh, we're trying to get, uh, seventy-five percent plans through to the architect by the end of this month, and so, we're pretty close to there now. Um, so, that's looking pretty nice. Uh, we got to do connections to the water system and bring it over to the fire station, and I, I think that's going to work out well.
Okay.
And I, I think it, uh, sometime in a future meeting, we'll probably have some plans for you guys to look at and just kind of know where we're going. Um, the Middle Park Recreation Park, um, we're getting pretty close on there, on those two. We're about sixty percent through on the set of plans. Um, and it's got most everything that everybody's seen on those, uh, proposed improvements in it as well. Um, so, those are in good shape, so we should be ready to go for that sometime in June. So, what I'd like, my, my goal is to be able to bring you some plans in June, the mid-month meeting, and say, hey, guys, I'm ready to go for, uh, bidding.
Right.
And that way, you can turn me loose.
Okay.
Um, Yeumans Road, uh, it's coming along okay. Um, they're getting closer to being finished with the drainage work, so they can start getting the curb and gutter. Um, so, that's, it's coming along okay right now. Um, Palm Drive and Point South Drive are some projects for Commissioner Fraser and the city of Hinesville that, uh, we're looking at some asphalt overlay and some, uh, patches. Uh, we are finished with some of the, uh, fieldwork and we're in the process of creating construction plans. We ought to have those ready shortly to go as well. So, I hope at the mid-month meeting next time to be able to tell you some ready to go for bid on those as well. Um, Fleming Road, uh, traffic control, um, we're putting together some plans on that. Uh, it's another, uh, project on, um, Commissioner Fraser. We're also looking at Elan, Elan, no.
You, you, you got it, no?
Yep.
Elm, Elm, Elm Street?
Elm, that's right.
See, I only have a question for you now.
I didn't, I didn't write it down and I-
Yeah.
Um, so, the city has kind of established a speed hunt, speed bump policy.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to be going through that process as well, make sure everybody's on board and, uh, get that together, so we don't screw up any controversy on that. Um, Mount Olive Church Road, um, leave the concrete, median is in, there's a little bit of striping that needs to be done, uh, a little bit of cleanup and grassing. Also, got a complaint this week that some of the shoulder work was starting to wash reels into the shoulders, and we've called a contractor to come back and kind of work on those and clean those up. Um, he should, his completion date is June first, and, you know, he's, he's at substantial completion now. Uh, we're, these are almost warranty items that we're looking at except for the striping, but he should be able to finish that, uh, in time. Um, Pioneer Road, uh, is, that project's significantly complete. Um, so, you know, they, they, their completion date is next week, but, you know, I, I think they're done. Public Works improvements, uh, we have done a boundary, uh, and a plat and an exhibit for Mr. Brown to be discussing, uh, some additional property on that. Um, so, make sure he did have that this week, so. Um, Isle of Wight, Solid Waste Convenience Center, this is what I have on the, the board up here. So, this is just a, a one slider to kind of give you some ideas of the thoughts of what's happening here. So, right now, you have Quarterman Drive, and Quarterman Drive comes straight on around and ties into Isle of Wight Road, right here. And then, our driveways, our existing Solid Waste Convenience Center is right here. And we have a driveway in, and when, once you get in that driveway, you're just like boom, right into the people that are stopped, unloading. And then, you can drive down the hill, go by the rec-, the recycle centers, and then you can come out on Quarterman Drive or either turn around and come back out on, uh, Isle of Wight Road. Really, really congested in that area. Have a lot of times where cars are backed up on Island's Highway. Somebody's trying to turn off of eighty-four, turn either on Quarterman Drive or into the, uh, Convenience Center, and they're backing up and then backing people up. They're, they're waiting to turn left, because these people are waiting to turn out, and then they're backing up out into eighty-four. So, it's, any, we, we need to fix this intersection. So, the plan is to reroute part of Quarterman Drive to this area right here, which gives me a considerable distance away from the intersection. Um, the, the civilian, I don't want to say civilian, but the, the, the public, general public's access to the Convenience Center will be here. That way, what we can do is, we can build the new improvements right there while we keep this intact. Um, we'll have, uh, the public works entrance to come in this way, where they can pull trailers, operate the compactors and do what they need to do, and we'll move the recycle center over here. Now, we can or, either do it or, or delay it. Uh, maybe repair some of the asphalt here that's behind where the existing ones are and make a connection so that we can utilize, uh, the facilities we have now, so that we don't lose anything. Um, but, we will be closing this section of Quarterman Drive and closing the driveways off of Island's Highway onto the Convenience Center. So, you'll have to come in, turn, and access this way. Which, you know, is still convenient for everybody, it's in the same location, but it really helps our traffic flow of what's happening in that area. Um, so, now, we do have some right-of-way and, uh, land acquisition that we'd have to go through, but, uh, we're still trying to use the maximum amount of what we own, instead of just buying everything and moving it to a new site. Um, oh, now, that's kind of opened up the question. I don't know, Mr. Brown, if you wanted to say anything about it?
Only, only a quick note financially is, the funds to do this project are already budgeted in the Solid Waste Fund, uh, in the new fees and everything that you approved, your five-year CIP for it, it's already approved, as is Gum Branch and some other improvements. So, that's, the funds should not be a problem there.
Trent, when you're coming out of Isle of Wight to eighty-four, are we going to actually make a right-turn lane when we're coming out right there?
That's right, I do not have-
Are you still going to let, leave it up to-
Lane on that intersection, but we can look at that.
We, we need to look at that, because, you know, that's the same problem that, what we're talking about right now is what we talked about the other day when we approved that project for Claude. And every, and everybody say it wasn't a issue, but now, all of a sudden, three months later, it's an issue. The issue was there all the time.
Yes, sir.
But now, we're going to try to straighten it out.
Yeah, that, that'll be good to go ahead and add that right there. That, that will be, that's actually a, an easy addition to what we're doing right now.
Right.
Trent.
Oh, you finished, Mayor? Go ahead.
Trent, now, the, the bottleneck going from, um, Isle of Wight Road down to the old Quarterman, the, the bottleneck was just people going, trying to go down Quarterman? Or was the bottleneck trying to get to the Convenience Center?
It varies on time of day and what day it is.
Let's say for the sake of conversation, it's the Convenience Center. Did we just, with this, um, um, proposal here, did we just move the bottleneck down a little bit?
No, sir.
We didn't? We, we elevated?
No, sir. What we'll end up doing is, we, we haven't seen any cars backing up the, I think that's like, almost three-hundred feet. You know, we haven't seen cars backing up that far-
Not that far.
On Isle of Wight Road. And especially if we add a left-turn lane here-
Mm-hmm.
Then, that will shorten the queue as well. So, um, we, we're, we're not anticipating that being a problem. Plus, plus, you know, right now, you've got these people and these people that are close proximity turning and knowing who's turning left and right. It's just, it's a little bit confusing to the drivers. So, this, this will spread it out and eliminate that.
And, and the new Quarterman Road cuts across, um, county property or it don't?
No.
Okay.
Because that's Missy Holmes', that's Missy Holmes' back up top.
Yeah, I'm good, go ahead.
Is this-
No, this, this, we're just one property owner we'd have to deal with.
Is this in the city of Midway?
Hmm, yeah.
Yes, it is.
No, yeah.
I mean, are we getting any contribution from the city of Midway on it?
No, they're not allowed to use the convenience.
Our convenience.
I don't think they'll contribute probably.
Not allow.
They, they, they're not supposed to be.
Yeah, we don't have any means to stop them, but, I mean, other than just catching them.
And that's a state route, so in order for us to do any decel lane, that's going to be a, I mean, a turn lane where you-
Yes, sir, we, we'll get a permit from D, DOT then.
But now, there's not a turn lane in the middle of that.
There is, there's a left-turn lane there now.
Okay.
There's a, there's a, um-
Left turn lane.
It's got a middle lane?
On eighty-four.
It's just a little turn off of that.
It's a little turn.
I'm talking about when you, can you sit in, it's got, in the middle of that road, there's not-
Yes, sir, there is.
Yeah, there is, there is. Okay.
When, uh, when the bank was bought the property next to the Coast Utilities, they had to add a left-turn lane there way back then. So, if you drive down the road, you'll, you've done it so much now, you don't even really notice. The road just kind of widens out a little bit and then run back up.
Hey, Eddie, it's sound like we're going to have to ride down there tomorrow.
Why y'all didn't go today?
Hey, I, I, I'm off tomorrow, pick me up too.
I had to cancel me today, Mayor.
That is necessary, y'all district to be done.
We, we've just, uh, addressed two issues here in the last thirty minutes that, um, that we, sometimes we forget. Number one is we've added water to a subdivision with a hundred-and-fifty houses in it, and right now, those folks will be using the Convenience Center at Miller Park. Now, we're also going to be adding houses down there on that Isle of Wight Road, and we're going to have the same issue there, so, now, there's, I mean, both places is going to generate garbage and recycling. So, I mean, if it's big enough, it's big enough, but is it just big enough for now? Monday, I was going to Glenville and I looked over in, at the one that Commissioner Thrift's, and I can tell you, I've never seen those things packed as much as they are now. And I, I know they, there's not that many new subdivisions in the Gum Branch area, but, I mean, right, we got the, that's something that we're going to have to really look at closer. I mean, with these subdivisions coming, it's just, it's something that is generated every day. And along with that, we just talked about added costs to our transport, so, I-
Yes, sir, so, so, so this site will, will add, uh, additional factor box? I mean, double, it's basically on doubling type, on what you got right now. I realize, I realize, even we look way down the road, I think the good thing, like about the design, when Trent and I were talking about it, by preserving what you've got there now, if you even had to go in and later on triple it from what it is now, you have the infrastructure still there to do that, which is good.
Joey, do, do we have, uh, the count, I, I know we do, I think, curbside pickup for the city of Flemington with poly cart service?
We do.
Though, so, I mean, is there any way in unincorporated area of the county where we provide, uh, curbside service?
Only in those areas that don't have a disposal site like this. And, and the main area of that is down by the Riceborough.
Longreach.
Where we had to take out, uh, some boxes.
No, no, I was just wondering, that, that development on, um, down this side of Arcadia with a hundred-and-fifty houses, if that was, um, something that, you know, as opposed to, uh, impacting the, the Miller Park, um, Convenience Center, if they had curbsides, but it, you know, I saw, I don't, I don't know how to-
That's a, that's a good thought, uh, it's not plugged into the model that we just ran.
Right.
See whether more staffing would be required, and I know we talked about all that during that time, or, or types of equipment, certainly, I think we ought to start looking at that to see-
Well, and, and the one on Isle of Wight Road that we approved last year, I, I think it was, um, I don't know how many houses in that, but that's right there by the, the Quarterman, um, station. So, and if that was curbside, but you know, but along with curbside, that's just the, the ninety-gallon container. You still got mattresses and bicycles and old velvet pictures of Elvis Presley that people throw away.
Well, I mean, and, and right across the road there, I mean, we got the one on Charlie Butler.
Charlie Butler is coming up.
Well, I mean, yeah, it's something that, you know, when we find out about it, is when people start complaining and, and these boys is working seven days a week to try to keep it up. And, um, I mean, maybe we need to select Joe do a study, decide where they need to go.
Already got the cost, just send ESG down there, we'll handle it.
Okay, well.
Yes, sir, one thing we'll see, there will be more development in this area other than this subdivision. I, I know some things are kind of coming along.
Really?
And, um, I know that there's, um, we have on our review table right now, it's a lot of lots. Um, I don't remember, like, a hundred-and-seventy, a hundred-and-ninety lots. To capability gave more than two-hundred-something lots, just like for Claude, right in this area right here. So, that's going to add a lot to this. It's outside the city limits of Midway, but they'll have Midway Water.
My question is, and I remember Commissioner Stevens, how vocal those people were that lived along there. So, when we redirect that street, I, I don't want us to do that cold turkey. We need to notify those folk ahead of time that we're going to move Quarterman Lane. We don't need to just-
We'll have to do a road closure notice-
Yeah.
At a time that offers public comment period and everything, we can even do that.
Yeah. You might want to take, make some courtesy visits prior to that time to kind of give them a little heads up that-
Let me say this to everyone up here also, we're talking about all of this new construction. It's one thing that we got to look at. We're also adding additional onto the fire load in the county. Out of all these houses that we're building, we're adding more to the fire load. That's another thing we got to look at.
Well, when we're looking at some of these things, we're trying to make sure that we're anticipating as much as we can down the street.
Right, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to get off on such-
Yeah.
Well, I think, I mean, it's, that one there is not the issue. I mean, we can fix part of that, but the issue is identifying other properties that we're going to be able to put these on. Now, I, I know at one time, we used to have one dump in Liberty County. Now, we've got seven or eight dumps, and, I, I mean, it's, it's got to be, it's got to be looked at. I mean, I don't know any other way to address it other than-
I, I think, I think the way that y'all were talking about going forward to be a way to address it, you're going to get to a point that you're going to need to go to curbside collection.
I, I agree.
Y'all had talked about that one time.[1736.04]
We talked about it.
Decided to do some expansion. Long term, that these are gonna go away.
Yeah, go away.
For probably, or maybe bulk items, maybe not. Maybe you do all that at curbside, but that that is something that, and we did that a study one time.
I see it coming.
Mm hmm.
I see it coming.
I think one county that's really behind on that, most all counties have curbside or somebody's picking them up because they had the poly carts out by the road.
Republic or somebody.
Let's look at it and put it out. I mean, I I don't.
Put it out there.
I mean, we can bid it out.
Well, what what you're gonna need.
Town hall meetings.
Yeah, well, yeah, it'll take a little. What you're gonna need to do too is go back to your rate model that you just adopted the fees for and put that in there and see what it does.
You see.
And then and then come back. It's, you know, you're gonna come back and decide, okay, do you want to keep these for a certain purpose or abandon them altogether? Do you want to keep them for recycling? Do you want to keep them for bulk goods? You go straight to curbside and say, we're gonna do it all? Because then you're gonna put a new fee. You know, you're gonna increase your fees. You you're gonna have to justify that to the homeowners. So it it would take a little while to get there.
Right, right.
But I will say this, this is the reason we brought the study to you, is if you think you want to go there, I mean, like as soon as you can get there without a doubt, then we need to call timeout on infrastructure improvements on any more of these.
Wasted money.
Say, let's move in another direction and go back and retool the model. I mean, that's that's what's exactly.
I mean, this is my suggestion. You know, I mean, I understand in in the in the rural areas, you know, some people live kind of scattered. But if you look at the infrastructure in in Liberty County, there's only like two places that that growth, future growth could go. And if, you know, developers are looking at us, which I I love that they're coming and they're not building subdivisions with thirty houses. But the point is, we have to be right with them with the infrastructure. And I I don't, if if it's a subdivision with a hundred and fifty people, why don't we just provide a service for those?
We don't, we don't have the rolling stock order people.
Now, we don't.
Right. So so what you did when you adopted the old model, you may remember that, so we probably might be right here, is that you're going ahead and making some improvements in years one and two. But if you want to go ahead and start that study to roll into that as soon as you can get there, then it'll take you about two years to get.
To get it together. And then I remember, we also talked about.
In that time, you're gonna be accumulating some money in your fund.
Right.
That will help you with those startup costs.
Right.
We made sure of that when we were doing the model.
Right. And I I remember, that's what we discussed, so we can, so it won't be a a huge impact on the customers.
That's right, there are.
Right. So let let it trickle in. Yeah, I.
I, yeah.
Obviously, they're building. And what I'm saying is, if, I mean, in the last year, I mean, how how many, how many plants of land have we approved of a hundred and something houses? It seems like instead of keep focusing on this, we need to start looking at a rolling fleet. And I mean, that's that's just my opinion.
And I don't see those folks in those subdivisions, just my opinion. Uh, you know, probably both um husband and wife are working, maybe getting home when after the dump closes and then they can't take it. So I I feel as though we need to try to provide that service. Go ahead with the two we already have on the books. And then let's look at it.
Because that's not even convenient anymore. The convenience center.
Me?
Yeah. All right, you like me.
I'm not eligible.
Well, I mean, we we.
Well, I I pick up Joey Brown trash every month.
I know, but that's what I'm saying. You know, you, somebody's doing it.
Yeah.
Before long, they're gonna say, we don't really, you know, we don't need that many of them, but it's uh, I don't, I think it needs to be, we need to start immediately.
We do.
You're getting thinking about when the, we were talking about another brigade coming. We weren't, we weren't ready for another brigade, I can tell you.
Oh, no, not.
So. And and we're, we've got growth and all the way we can stay ahead of it is uh is try to, I mean, two years, let's start tomorrow.
Well, pretty simple. So what what I'll do is, Kim and I'll get with uh C R W Beck. But the folks that did that analysis, has got all of our work, we've already talked about that with them, is go in there and 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 do a proposal with them to look at a poly cart delivery system.
Yes.
Because it's been about five, six years since we looked at it.
It has.
Been there, yeah.
And we decided to postpone that because we were going into the fire. And we didn't want to add on anything else to the residents. But the fact is, again, with this new rate increase or the increase that was necessary, you're building a little bit in there that you could roll over i- in year three or whenever it is of that plan, so.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty houses is, that's six hundred plus people easily.
And 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 what I'm saying is.
Lot of trash.
Mm hmm.
It gets to a point where the convenience center center is not convenient. And 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 what I'm saying is, people pay for convenience. So if we could figure out a model where it's gonna be an increase, but it's not that much and it's more convenient, I I I think that's a no brainer. But that that's that's just me. I think, I understand what he's, but after, man, it's twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, I think we'll see that's litter on the side of the road.
I I would, I would say, let's go ahead with what you got planned.
Definitely.
In the next couple of years, though, uh, just this, to go ahead, because this has been needed for like.
Forever. I mean, I I I agree, but I I think phase one and then phase two need to be, let's look at a fleet. I don't know if it's just us or or we subcontracted out something. What what I'm saying is, even with that, the property values will be better off of convenience. You know, we we having people at their house put putting trash in their in their trunk to take it there? I mean.
Happens all the time.
Yeah. And it's twenty twenty-one. So let's, let's look past it.
Of course, you you all know, excuse me, and then we need to move on, the the private trash companies, I'm sure are gonna be looking at these subdivisions and offering their services too.
Most of, most of them are serviced by by a private provider.
Yeah.
And I won't get, you know, there's a whole, there's some leads to get into. You come down to that, then you look at a buyout of the, they're already there.
Right.
Which is where we were six, seven years ago. And and because it'll be a mandated service. I mean, it's gonna be a county ordinance mandate, you should have it.
Mm hmm.
You know, there's a lot to consider there.
Mm hmm.
We can certainly get that kicking.
Got a lot.
Well, so much about all that trash.
All right, Trent.
I'll just have one word on trash, because one of my other items is Gum Branch.
Yes, sir. Keep moving.
I hope to have the layout like this for you to look. Now, it's not gonna look like this. It's gonna be tailored for the Gum Branch. I'll have that for you to look at next month. Uh, Walterville Roads, I have talked to um.
Mayor Baker.
Mayor Baker. And I've given a sample letter about those roads that are wanting to uh ask us to adopt and I'm just kind of waiting on them right now for that.
When was the last time you talked to him, Trent, about this?
Two, two months ago.
Two months ago, okay.
Yes, it was two months ago, because I talked to him about it at their council meeting.
Okay. Let's try to, I I'll, um, I'm I'm off on next week, but the the first week of June after Memorial Day, let's you and I try to get with him, because I think I talked with him about um.
Yeah, I didn't.
Maybe, maybe had, no, yeah, um, maybe had another couple of roads that I had some calls about. But we we, me and you and him will get together and um try to get this, it's been on this um on your report for a while. We do need to move on with it.
Trent.
Bring bring it. No, we, that's in my district. We gotta go to Marion District.
Not all, not all. Trent, Mr. Long, uh, on this Walterville Road deal, isn't one of these in that subdivision across from Baker and Baptist Church?
Yes, the Hampton, the the new subdivision that Claude did with Carbon Gutter?
Mm hmm.
Yes. Those roads were uh installed and the uh bond has expired and they just have not added it to their list.
Right, because I understand there's some issue with those roads out there already.
I wrote out there, it's been about two months ago, but I did not see any issues with the road. I'll go look again.
All right. Because I don't want to accept something that enshambles already.
I'll go out and look, because I didn't see anything obvious out there. So if you, if you know something specific, do get with me sometime and let me know what you're seeing specific, so I don't just miss it. But, you know, I I it's, we went out, because we looked at some of the drainage and some of the way it all works out there.
But um.
It was.
We'll double check.
Mayor Baker and I.
But yeah, um.
We'll double check it.
Yeah, but but Commissioner, I think, um, and I know what, exactly what you're talking about, whatever that um subdivision is called. Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But um, for this, for this bullet on Trent's report, that was the dirt roads that Larry and I had talked about, um, bringing into the county um the city of Walterville's inventory for the county to accept so that we can start grading them. That's what most of this was about. This wasn't a subdivision like Hampton Ridge, which needs to be considered.
Yeah, but that was in that sub, that was in that list.
Well, I'm I'm talking the ones that.
It was in that list.
The ones that me and Larry gave him, what 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 dirt roads, like like round uh Thompson and um right around there. Down from Hillary Park up in there with Reverend Frazier's churches.
There were several of them in there.
Yeah, mm hmm. But the ones in in Hampton Ridge all need to be um.
I think they're gonna try to add those in with that request.
Right, that's what I'm saying now, because they were on that list.
Okay.
But I I certainly.
Right.
I certainly want to go and look at it and make sure there's nothing failing.
Right.
Um, all right, last item on the agenda. Sorry, I've been up here so long. Um, we took bids for the Recreation Department ADA accessibility, um, and that included some improvements to Gil Park. We were, everybody should have a copy of the bid tabulation, big eleven by seventeen piece paper. Looks kind of busy like this. We received uh two bids. Uh, the low bid was uh Swindle Construction for amount of three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, ninety-one dollars and fifty cents. Uh, our budget for this item was three hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. So you can see that we're over budget with what we had. And we do feel like what we had on the plans, including the basketball court and the improvements at Gil Park, um, helped us meet our ADA requirements at our parks. Um, so what we did when we uh we looked at it to try to get it back down closer to the three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, um, I met with Jimmy Martin and Mr. Brown. We looked at a couple of different items that we could change or modify. One of the things we looked at doing, we had twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars worth of improvements at Miller Park. Now, we can do those now, or we can delay those and do those with our Miller Park expansion.
Makes better sense.
So what we were thinking on there to bring this one down is to put the twenty thousand, four hundred dollars in the plans for the Miller Park expansion. The ADA improvements at uh Jones Creek Park, there's really no way for me to get the ADA compliance up to those bathrooms that sit on a hill that's as tall as the ceiling.
Yeah.
So, you know, those just give us handicap parking spot and a sidewalk to a couple of little things. That's nine thousand dollars that we felt like we could just defer that to get it back down. Um, and and know that we don't have complete ADA requirements there. But at some point, I think there probably is gonna be a push to revitalize that entire park.
There is.
Because it's a great park. It just needs a lot of help.
It's on my list.
Right. So then, at Gil Park, the way we brought the sidewalk around the backside of the proposed ball field, I was gonna have a little section of pipe that needed to go underneath the sidewalk. Well, to do that, extra pipe is nineteen thousand dollars of pipe work that I need to do so I can just get under that little section of sidewalk. The grades and all for the sidewalk are such that I could delay the nineteen thousand dollars of this uh drainages to go in for the ball field until we're ready to build the ball field. The site will drain, and I just know that I have a section of sidewalk that I gotta cut out and repair and put a piece of pipe under. But in the meantime, we'll have use of the sidewalk. And, you know, I don't know exactly where that ball field is on the Recreation Department's uh schedule or capital items, but Jimmy was in favor of holding off on that nineteen thousand dollars until the time we build the park. Um, now, that gave us the full two basketball courts and it gave us a good walking trail around the site. And taking those three items takes us down to three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. Still a little bit over budget, but there are funds there to be able to do it. Um, so what we're trying to do is recommend to you that you enter into a contract with Swindle Construction for three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, ninety-one dollars and fifty cents. With a change order to reduce the contract with these three items to three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. We'd also like a contingency to go along with that. Now, that's what we're trying to suggest to get to close to the three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar budget. If you guys have some other ideas or different way to go to do that or to fund the project, we're we're willing to do what you guys want to provide the facilities that you want.
So one one quick thing here, and I apologize for having to step out. Um, we had money, Trent, in Gil Park Phase Two to do the, we had, we had a Gil Park budget of one forty-seven, two sixty-eight, uh, which included those ADA improvements. The only amount of money that was left over and above that for any other improvements was a hundred and eighty-eight, oh twenty-four. So the the budget, or it was an estimate on construction cost, um, let me, three eighty-five, two ninety-two. That's your number, right? I'll ask.
New number is three thirty-nine.
The new number is three thirty-five, two seventy-nine.
Okay, okay.
Where you are.
No, no. I I'm just saying, on a budget wise.
Oh, oh, oh.
Those were the funds that we had to do.
Oh, okay.
All the ADA and the Gil Park Phase Two.
Okay, well, that's fine. If 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 we actually have three eighty-five, then we're pretty damn close.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, I had talked with Joey earlier and I talked with some of the other commissioners. I looked at these, we've got eleven parks, and I know you've identified two that you probably didn't want to work on. But I I sat on that thing, on that brick board as a liaison, and some of these issues right here are some that I saw and some of the other commissioners saw. Um, and I told Joey today that we've been working on these ADA, some of them for five years. And um, I've I've not owned that anymore, but I have a little money. And I'd like to see this completed, because everywhere we go now, there's people getting out of vehicles with walkers, wheelchairs, and um, I don't think we've got enough handicap parking spots. I I don't know that our sidewalks are in a position to help folks get the bathrooms and whatever, playgrounds. And Joey is, if he can, and the board will approve to move some money out of my sales tax in there to help with this, I'd like to see it finished. Um, I don't want no sidewalk named for me or nothing, but I'm just saying, I want to make sure that it's done. And I that's, I just think we've, um, somebody falls off of it next week and gets hurt, I just, I just don't know how I'd feel about it since we, it ain't that we've drug our feet, it's just that it takes time to get it done and engineered. So I've I've got a little bit of money and Joey knows how much it is, so y'all figure out what it is and let's get it done. Let's get it fixed and um and and move on. I mean, what are you talking about, ten or twelve, fifteen thousand dollars or?
Um.
Joey, what are you looking at? Oh, you add faster than that.
You went to Bradwell.
Was this coming out rec budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Mm hmm.
Part of it.
Yeah, okay.
Most of it.
Yeah, we need to move on with it.
Um.
Yeah, we've been doing that for a while.
You're talking with engineering and the add-on, because your number here, three eighty-nine, oh ninety-one, doesn't include a contingency, correct?
No, it does not.
Okay, so you're talking, you're talking like uh four sixty, nine seventy, eight sixty-five.
So you need about six thousand, no, sorry, eighty thousand dollars?
How much?
Talk to the liaison.
Seventy-five, six eighty-six, sixty-five.
You got that in your pot, sir?
That includes.
I don't, I don't know, I don't keep up with what's in my pot. I'm just saying, I'd like, I'd like, if there's some money in there, Joey, let's use it and put it over there and get it done. I mean, we've got a the low bid, and if the guy's ready to go to work, then it's eleven parks. And you're gonna probably work on ten of them or maybe nine of them. And these things need to be done. I mean, you know, we can drag around and go back out for bid and hope we get money. But I'd like to, I'd like to see it done there in every district. There's, I think, every, every one of them is in somebody else's district. I got some.
You got some.
Let's, let's do it. I mean, I.
You can afford it.
Sir?
You can afford it based on.
I can't?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, well, let's do it then. I mean, I would make the motion if you, if we need to amend the budget to do it.
Go ahead and make the motion, Eddie.
Need a motion to uh move funds from District Six, uh, road appropriation over to recreation.
All right. Gary, would you make the motion?
I'll make the motion that we've moved the funds from District Six in any amount and by any.
I'll make the motion that we move the funds from District Six in any amount and by any means necessary.
I second that one.
No, I'm just joking. No, I think a motion that we move the funds from District Six as stated by Commissioner Wallen.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Before we vote.
Somebody seconded, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Frazier did.
Mr. Frazier said, just, I just wanna give for clarification, I know we're trying to all help out, but I know Commissioner Wallen has made a commitment earlier.
And it's still there?
I just wanna make sure that was still there. And myself, to you, I appreciate what you're doing to help Liberty County out.
I guess the money's still there, ain't it, Joey? Or Miller Park?
Well, it hadn't been bid yet, so we don't know what that amount will be.
Whatever it is, we can.
We're gonna do it up.
And this, this have us clearing free for the ADA.
All the ADA compliance.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Well, I just got one question though. With Gil Park, even when we were starting that construction on Gil Park, the ADA information was already out, wasn't it?
Yeah, so what we have there now.
It's partially.
Works.
Yeah.
I mean, we meet ADA requirements.
What we have there now.
What we have.
Not enough?
Something for the next phase, expansion.
Add the basketball.
Yes, yes, so what happens is adding the basketball court.
Then you gotta have.
I add the ADA accessibility to the basketball court as well as the walking trail.
Right, okay.
So the improvements at Gil Park are more Gil Park improvements instead of just ADA.
Okay.
That's why I think there's a couple of line items.
Yeah, I was looking, okay.
And if you'd look on the, in the bid tabulation, just so you know, you can always track, you can see how much we're spending at each park. Because I've broken it down to what work is done at which park.
But this will bring us into compliance.
But we're not touching Jones Creek.
Not yet.
Don't read this.
There's gonna be.
No.
There's gonna be a total redo over there.
But we getting Stevens, I mean, we getting that part.
Jesse's been called.
Well, I tell you, I watch, I watch these guys down there work, and I mean, I know Commissioner Gillard's brother works down there, and I mean, they do a good job, and I've been on Jimmy to stay under budget, but now, you know, I'm not on there no more, but I'm just saying that this is something that I have seen. And I can tell you, there's other things that need to be done, but right now, this is very important. This is not a Liberty County thing, this is a funded mandate that we've got to make sure that. And if it's a mandate, then we need to fix it, so let's fix it.
It's the right thing to do.
Yes, sir. So I need to clear up some confusion from me so that I.
We vote correctly.
Okay. So we want to accept the delay of the Miller Park? Or do we do the Miller Park things now?
They want to accept the delay of the Miller.
I don't know, I don't know, if you ain't got a bid, you ain't got a bid.
Well, I've got a bid.
Well, we're talking about the ADA stuff, so let me ask this question, Trent, you and I didn't ask this question, we went over this. But my only concern about doing that is the amount of construction we're gonna be, I know, I know this is supposed to be out of the way, but the amount of stuff we're gonna be mobilizing down there to change stuff around, I'm a little bit afraid of putting new improvements out there right now because, because that project's fixing to go out to bed here shortly, and I just wouldn't wanna get torn up.
And that's my recommendation too, is to go ahead and let's not do Miller Park as part of this one.
Would do that in one construction.
Me too.
Yes, perfect. All right, Jones Creek, did we decide?
Hold on.
We're doing Jones Creek, we're holding off.
Hold on for Jones Creek.
All right, and Gil Park, you want me to hold off on the drainage? Or do you want, I mean, is that fine to do that so we can just defer that to later on?
Get it, get whatever you can get done with it, Trent. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't go down there, Commissioner, Commissioner.
I just wanna make sure I'm responsible. I'm doing the right thing for you guys.
Okay. And I mean, and the bid now is to, I mean, the motion is to, is to move the funds over there.
Yeah.
Now, do we, we gonna vote on that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, we are. One last question for you about the drainage at Gil Park, would that be, would that subject itself to being damaged later on when we go back to, no? I'm with Commissioner.
I'll have to, I'll have to extend it a little bit more.
Yeah.
To get to the other side of the park, but it won't.
I'm with Commissioner Wallen, go ahead and do it then.
When you get ready to finish the park, then you'd finish the park.
Go ahead and do it then, okay.
You can ask a question, the drainage is not pined though, right?
No, 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 the drainage, there are some couple of catch spaces that will be in the space between like the batting cage and the foul line.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, everybody clear? Mr. Jones, you good?
Yes.
All right, all in favor of the motion presented, raise your right hand. Those are polls. All right, got your marching order, sir?
Yeah, and now do we need to bid on, I mean, do we need to vote on that contractor?
Yes, so that was my other question is, we wanna vote on the contract subject to a change order to include the drainage improvements.
Correct.
So moved.
Yes, sir.
Is that second?
Second.
Okay, I think we discussed it fully, all in favor.
When's the start time?
Well, what we'll do is, it'll take about thirty days to get him on the site, because we'll have to generate contract documents. He's gotta send off good insurance and bids, and usually it takes about thirty days before we have a reconstruction conference. So probably in about thirty days, we'll have something going. And the good thing about Swindle is, he is responsive.
I'm glad we're finally able to meet our ADA.
Oh, yes, sir.
Mandates.
I don't know if we've addressed ADA issues right here, Joey.
Where?
In this area right here.
I don't, I know that we did a long time ago, but I'm, you know, we haven't reassessed them, but we certainly could.
All right, Mr. Longton?
Yes, sir. I don't have any more unless y'all have any more for me.
Got a question for you. Did you ever get the price on Bill Carter Road?
Yes, sir.
I never got it.
Didn't vote on it. Why? I have such a hard time with things getting out to you.
Mr. Road, you travel every day, ain't it?
I don't drive, not every day, about every other day. But yes, sir, I've got that. I'm gonna go try to resend that to you. Give me till in the morning, because I gotta run tonight, but I'll, I'll resend it to you in the morning, and I'm gonna call you and make sure you had it.
Okay.
One quick note that we just, that was called up here, we didn't actually vote on that second one. Got a motion, second on the second one, and then we asked about the timeframe, but can we, all in favor on the second one?
All in favor.
The contract.
Swindle, right.
What is it, what is the name?
Swindle Construction.
Swindle Construction.
You've met Tase Swindle before?
You had any poses?
I don't know if I've met him before, I may have, if he's worked for Georgia Power.
Oh, sure, I don't think he's worked for Georgia Power, but.
Ain't had him.
Trent, I got one question, do you have the layout for Gun Branch?
Almost, I mean, I've got a layout.
Oh, when you get it done?
It's not pretty like that one.
Okay, well, send it to me. I want a prettier one.
It's not pretty like that one.
The prettiest one.
Prettiest. Send it to me.
All right, y'all have a good night.
Water, contract water system.
Yes, sir, you're right, we included a copy. This is actually, we need a current agreement with Woodrow Sapp. As I look back on the files, I didn't have a fully executed copy from whenever it was approved before, but it automatically renews every year, so, I mean, there was a motion, there was a second on the floor, all that was done, we just didn't execute it. But I'd like that if we could, just have a motion in a second to, to, you know, reauthorize the contract with Woodrow Sapp. As y'all know, they do all our billing and collection of the water system, and have done a great job with us. But it's under the same terms and conditions as the original contract with no cost change.
Okay.
Great, Chairman.
You have a motion?
Well, I, I had a question.
Go ahead.
But I mean, after the motion, I'm for it, I just had a question.
Just Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the water system, O N M.
Woodrow Sapp, all right.
Woodrow Sapp.
Is it second?
Second.
Motion in a second, now ready for discussion, Commissioner Gill.
Yeah, Joey, Sapp, as we knew it, is, is, is it under another, I mean, ownership or another company?
It's Woodrow Sapp.
It's still the same people that we always had?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't know, I was in a meeting yesterday on how the public works, and someone was saying that, that it was another company that, they were working under another company, that someone had bought them or something like that, I'm not sure.
I'll double check, I mean, I'm not aware of that at all.
Okay.
If it's happened, it's happened pre-research.
No, I mean, I'm with the agreement. I mean, you know, they do a good job.
I will double check that.
Yeah, I just thought it was, okay, that's fine.
Commissioner Jones, we make these kind of decisions based on what Committee Gill just said. We know this company, they've done a good job for us, and there are no changes. So then that gives us a level of comfort to prove, otherwise, right, we take it back and digest and come back. But working with somebody who we know from experience, and there's no change in the, in the terminology of the contract.
Well, yeah, and it's, you know, again, it's a little bit confusing.
It's based on staff recommendation.
Well, even a little bit more confusing is that we didn't ever have an executed document. So I just want it to be clean and everything, so it's really, you know, it's really not renegotiating or redoing a contract. Obviously, we'd look at those, yes, sir.
All right, although I wouldn't blind sex. All in favor of the contract, thank you, sir.
All right.
Come on, Mara.
G I S.
Mr. Stanley's gonna talk to you real quickly about that.
I wonder why he was in this meeting?
What I have tonight is a contract with, is an addendum to a current contract that we have with the Coastal Regional Commission. They provide G I S assistance with our G I S department as part of the contract to get our G I S department up and running. This contract is actually a little bit cheaper or reduced than it was last year. And this is all budgeted bunny for the amount of thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. This has been moved from nine-one-one's budget over to I T's budget. So what we're doing is transitioning away from them maintaining our addresses, our G I S person is now doing that a hundred percent. And this is to help us move forward with some G I S projects, you know, identifying, mapping stuff like that throughout the county. We're gonna sit down and see what we need to do throughout the county and what other departments need, and then move forward with that, and they're gonna help us. So I'm basically asking the commission to approve, Mr. Brown and Chairman Lovett, to sign the addendum.
You say you, move from nine-one-one to your budget?
That's what, that's what you want.
Can your budget support it?
It's already, it will, it's, yeah. It's already built in.
All right, that's the, that's the selling point right there.
Yes, sir.
Chair, take the motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, all in favor, I'm sorry, with any discussion? All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appointment acknowledged of Board of Elections, Republican Party.
Yes, sir, we got a resignation from the Republican Party representative to the Board of Elections, and under law, the Republican Party makes that appointment, and basically it just has to come before the commission for information, it's not a necessarily approval. So you just have to, you know, maybe make a motion, a second acknowledging receipt of the Republican Party representative.
The same will be done had it been the Democrat Party?
Absolutely, it applies on both sides.
All right. Chair, take the motion.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, I'm a Democrat.
Receive the, receive the name. Motion in a second, and receive the name submitted by the Republican Party for their representation.
Do we know who it is, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I just saw his name.
Alex Sharah.
Alex Sharah.
I thought it was in there.
I don't know who he is.
Alex Sharah.
I'm a little bit puzzled that he can't spell Republican. You shamed B. Darcy for one day, and she told me that.
You're the second one down there.
You see that?
I see it now. All in favor, raise your right hand.
I married a schoolteacher.
Round announcements.
Uh, just a.
Your appointments?
Some direction, please.
Uh, you know what, I know y'all were ready, but that's not on, is it on y'all's agenda?
I think we had proposed.
We'll do it next, we are ready.
We can wait, I mean, we ready, but.
Whatever the board wants to do.
If y'all ready, let's not, we're in good time. Do we need to amend the agenda to make it?
I don't know about that one.
I think that'd be the proper thing.
Let's amend the agenda, make item number six C, six D, excuse me.
Six D. We wanna go ahead and get it out the way, show the other side that we're ready.
Chair, take the motion to make item six D, vote appointments.
Some, some of it.
Second.
Second.
Second, all in favor? All right, Comedian, are you ready?
I can't wait, I can't wait to see this.
I know it.
Uh, Mr. Chair, on the aging service, we reappoint Reverend Henry Frazier.
All right, somebody make that into a motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Just second.
Second.
All in favor?
Reverend Henry Frazier's reappointed to the aging board, you know that long time?
Coastal workforce development, I had two applicants, we're gonna reappoint Mr. David Floyd.
David Floyd, all right. Chair, take the motion.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Second, we reappoint Mr. David Floyd to the coastal workforce board. Any discussion, all in favor, Mr. Floyd's reappointed.
Mr. Chair, on the cultural and historical committee, we had seven applicant. We're looking at Mr. Phil Odom, Lysira Lovett, Jeffrey Porter, Renee Reese, Natalie Hine, and Mr. Jason Baker to be reappointed.
Reappointed, reappointment, okay. Chair, take the motion for the reappointment.
I make a motion, follow the guidelines.
All right, second.
All right.
Second.
Second. All in favor, they are reappointed, thank them for their service.
Defax, one position available, have one applicant, recommendation is Mr. Lois Frazier. They're known as DeFrazier.
Chair, take the motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
Second.
Second, we have Ms. DeFrazier appointed to the Defax Board, she's done work with children in Defax. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, Ms. Frazier's appointed.
Yeah, we had no one for Georgia Foster, we are working on that one. And also while there, we're working on the library board, they had no applicants.
No.
We're working on.
On the lobby?
We're working on those two.
Nobody, the library board?
Yeah, I know, that used to be.
Well, let's say, say that on Facebook Live, I know, I know we had to find somebody for the library board.
We got it in direct.
We got it in the works.
Okay.
I think we got it. We got it in the works.
It should be flooded with applicants for the library board.
That's the one that ran.
That's a hot topic.
Ran us out of town, what, almost.
Next one.
Mr. Chair, on the hospital authority, we felt it was no more than recommended, highly recommended that we allow Ms. Kimbley Ryan to succeed husband term on the hospital authority board. Now, I know we're supposed to send.
Three.
Three names, what we had, also had another name, Ms. Diana Ingram was an applicant also. But our recommendation is Ms. Kimbley Ryan, so I don't know how.
There were only two applicants.
Only two applicants, so, yeah.
All right.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
A second to that.
Okay.
Discussion, Mr. Brown, so they have, we're bound to send both the names.
Correct.
Okay. With, remind me, with, with an indication that, no, you have to send the names?
I mean, we can make that, but it's not contingent upon, their appointment's not supposed to be contingent upon.
That's right, it's there.
So we'll submit them in that order.
Okay. Okay, all in favor. Thank you, y'all know that Ms. Ryan is Bobby Ryan's, I hate to say widow, it sounds. Hurts my heart. All right, got the last one?
No, sir, the public facility, had two positions, two applicant, reappoint, Ms. Renee Camper and James Rogers.
Okay, they're both serving now, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion to reappoint Ms. Camper and Ms. Rogers, all right, motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, raise your right hand, they're reappointed.
Last one was a recreation board, it was coming from District Six, and we asked Commissioner Wallen, was that okay with him, since it's coming from him and it's a district appointment? And he said to reappoint Mr. Chuck Smith.
I make a motion, we go with Mr. Chuck Smith.
Someone second that motion.
Second.
Motion second, we reappoint Mr. Chuck Smith, any discussion on that? All in favor, raise your right hand, please.
Mr. Chair, that's it.
Ah, we're not gonna do this one?
Go ahead, Gary. Oh, I'm sorry.
We need to do that one?
We have one more, a letter that came from the Coastal Region Commission. As you know, Mr. Richard Hayes and Ms. Shirley Frazier serves on that right now, and according to how it reads on tell, we can appoint someone else, they can continue to serve, and they do wish to continue to serve.
That was my question, that they will continue to serve.[1793.86]
That is, uh, I was, I'm glad, I was gonna bring that up. That is the community-wide appointment, so all the mayors have to agree. What you've done in the past is you've gone ahead and offered a couple of recommendations and we then send out by letter to those mayors because they got this letter too, and say, you know, the board asks you to please consider reappointment of these individuals. So we'll go ahead and if it's the board's wish, we'll go ahead and draft that out to those mayors and get that out this week.
Right.
Is that the board's wish? Chair, turn the motion to that effect.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Happy to have those two people continue to serve.
Miss Chairman, I was gonna ask a question. Commissioner Walden, did you say you're not on the rec board or liaison?
No, I'm, I asked to come off of that, Mr. Thrift. I've been on it for a long time. I'm.
I'm not looking for the position, but I was just wondering because you did a great job of it.
Well, I appreciate it.
I heard that too. I thought, did I miss that?
I know. I did, I missed it. Do we need a motion to reappoint him?
I'll make that motion.
Well, speaking of, how, how does, um?
It's, it's something that the board wanted to do, so it's, it's not a, to me, it's a required position. But it's something that the board wanted to do, hospital liaison, so it's, it's the board's wishes and the representatives' wishes.
Well, I was asked to do that, Chairman Carr asked me to do that and he also asked me to sit as, for him on the nine-one-one board. And I, of course, I got sick and I didn't attend a lot of the nine-one-one. Well, I did come during the hurricane and I fell by the wayside. But the rec board there, I just said, maybe I'm, you know, a young person may need to try to do that. But, uh, I mean, I just, I still go by there and, and they communicate with me, but I just thought that maybe somebody else wants it, so.
Commissioner Walden's pretty young. I mean, if, you know, I think probably, probably it's a good thing when, when, when new leadership comes in to go ahead and reaffirm, you know, that would, would be good. That's all that would be needed is to reaffirm.
Well, he was just telling us a while ago he could run four flat or something like that.
Yeah.
Didn't he tell us a while ago back there?
Yeah.
Four-three.
Four-three.
And I heard that with my good ear.
And he said it was in his Chevelle?
He said a Oldsmobile.
Oldsmobile.
Oldsmobile, that would make.
Joey, Joey, but he knows how to go, he fly.
I do think, and I'll say, it is a good idea to have a liaison to the rec board. So Commissioner.
Want you to think.
I think we should have a liaison on, on a lot of our boards.
Want you to think about it, Eddie, and, um, the rec board.
I'll think about it.
Think about it, okay.
All right, we'll think about it.
Yeah, think, think about it and, um, and, um, we, we see about getting it back on there. I mean, he did, Eddie did a good job over there.
Thank you. Listen, now, my ears perked up and maybe y'all did too, and it was kinda what I heard Commissioner Frazier saying. Uh, and Trent was talking about the growth that's coming to Liberty County, growth that's coming to unincorporate Liberty County. We need to get ready. We don't need for all that to happen. I mean, he just gave us a hint of what's, you know, on the table and, and I'm not sure we're ready right now.
No, sir.
But as a commission, you know, whether we're sitting here or you guys or whoever's sitting here, someone needs to start getting ready for that.
Well, I, I think one important, a piece of that, there's a lot, I guess, to get ready, um, in my opinion, there's, you know, a lot. But the other side of that is to go ahead and do what you've talked about, which we're commissioned on in, in the mission, is to look at impact fee schedules. I think that would be good too, along with looking at this water plant. That's.
Yeah. For a long time, the growth has been in the city, but now the growth is going outside. It's, it's going down our highways and byways, Commissioner Jones, so.
Well.
As Commissioner, we have an obligation, you know, to the future of Liberty County and to do as much as we can to make sure it's a smooth process, that, you know, manage growth or smart growth, whatever they call it.
Right out, that Griffin Park.
We gotta make sure, because whether, ready or not, from what I heard, here it comes.
Yep.
I want to tell you, I've mentioned in the Commissioner's thrift earlier, my wife said that they, she has a, you know, a chemistry lab and she also has a room she teaches science in. And my son also has got two rooms. And the principal come and told him that they were gonna have one room next year that they're expecting three hundred and eighty-something more students.
Really?
So, I mean, it's, it's spilling over. And I don't know, I mean, I know we're, we're gonna grow them because we've, you know, we've got a, a community here with Fort Stewart, but, um, I mean, it's gonna start growing all around us and anything that is minor, and I mean, I don't use it. I'll be honest with you. I mean, I, we're fortunate that, you know, we've got, the city picks up the trash and I don't visit the convenience center. Now, my wife goes to recycling and she's not real happy with that, Joey, still, so I'm gonna let her call you the next time. But I'm just saying that, you know, those are things that we, you know, how long did we fight and kick and scream that we just couldn't afford the fire department and it's here now? So, I mean, these things, uh, they cost money, um, like everything else, but we, you know, we're gonna have to address them. And I think that some of it is, is some of our smaller cities that we're trying to help. I mean, you know, we can just do so much and then everybody's got to kinda stand on both feet.
The way, the way, this is certainly just speculation, but ten years from now, you know, I think the counties' populations go, compared to Hinesville's population, unincorporated county population. It's always been in Hinesville pretty much, but what I see now, if they keep building a hundred houses here, a hundred houses there, how many in, in, three hundred, what, what'd you say the number you calculated?
A hundred and fifty houses is at least six hundred people. If you figure a three-bedroom house with four people.
With that, ten years from now, man, you know, we're good.
You know, we, we used to get, every once in a while, when Sonny was here, he would fill us in and then, of course, you know, Jeff would tell us. But I mean, word on the street, you can hear, fifteenth street, they've sold them lots.
Yep.
I mean, that's gonna, that's gonna be every, all of it. And then the next thing that we're gonna have to look at is, and I, and I mean, it, it's probably gonna happen before we know it, but there's seven of us on this board and it's, because of our population, we're gonna have to redistrict. It's gonna be to where we might wind up having to have more commission seats. I don't know.
And I already see, uh, this team you see right here, they're not gonna be able to handle what's on the horizon.
He's got a full load right now.
I don't know, that's right.
Joey's got a full load.
Joe, Joe ain't been here long enough. We don't wanna tell him that yet.
So we may as well strategize.
Oh, yeah, we do.
We may as well strategize, because I see y'all gonna, it's gonna take more than you two to run everything that's gonna work.
Yeah, I mean.
And right on the wall. And right on the wall. Not tomorrow, but it's coming.
It is.
But, you know, Miss, Miss Chairman, I, and I guess if, if we have some, like, announcements, I did have a couple of questions, Joey, you know, it kinda tied into what Ed just said, um, what, what's the latest on the census account?
The census won't be revealed until September.
September, okay.
September fourteenth is the target date.
And, um, this latest round of stimulus, or, you know, I don't know what this one is called, if it's the. Is it, what is, the Americans, what is?
AR, AR, ARP.
What, what's the latest on, on that?
So the latest on that is Treasury issued, uh, those, those guidance documents and ACCG is having some calls this next week to go over some particulars of those. Our plan then, once we have that webinar with them and got enough assurance of what we're saying's right, probably even with their presentation, is, is to give you a PowerPoint and lay out the ifs, ands, or buts so that you can make a decision. You're gonna need to, we will need to make a plan for use of that money.
Right.
Uh, because that money can be used through 2024. And in fact, those documents want you to spread that out. They want you to see and be ready for use of other impacts that may be happening down the road. So, again, that's.
Well, you know, the word on the street, not that, that, that matters, is that you can spin it on just about anything. That's not true?
This is, this is even more restrictive than the first one.
Is it?
Yes, sir. And it's, because it's managed by Treasury and it's not managed by the state.
Okay.
So, but, but we, we're working on this bullet.
Yeah, okay, yes. As soon as it do, we, we do need to get on that. And, and I guess, um, with what everybody's, you know, um, agreed, you know, when we, when we have these, um, these off-site workshops, you know, the, the, the future, which is here. I mean, you know, we, we used to, um, be the puppies chasing the car, but we, we caught it now. So what, 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 what are we gonna do with it? What, what are we gonna do with it? And if, you know, we need to, we need to put in that plan, um, wh- while we can. I mean, it's, it's here.
We do.
And, you know, um, I can tell you right now, we, I don't, I don't think we're ready, but, you know, we, we do need to, um, we need to get ready. We do.
Yeah, some, some neighboring counties are struggling with that now. We don't wanna be one of them.
Well, you're, I mean, let, let's back up and think though. You are, I mean, you got a T-Splash in place. Identified, in doing that, you identified growth areas and what you need to do to be able to handle those traffic enhancements. You got, that's a five-year program that you're spinning out with.
And, and I was comfortable with that until I heard what Trent said, you know?
Well, I mean, yeah, so, you, you, I mean, so, so you started T-Splash planning two years ago? And you had to plan for what you knew about then?
Yeah.
And you, and all the data was out there that we knew?
That we knew.
Coming and going and all those things. And you had, you had the budgeted money. You had, you could only prioritize to, to the extent of that.
That what you know.
You know, what, what I was, when I was saying that, you know, that, that is here, you know, there are times, and we all have seen it, that Highway eighty-four going toward Long County, it, it wouldn't, traffic wouldn't move any faster if it was as wide as from, you take Walmart and all that stuff in between, um, eighty-four and South Main and make down the highway, it would still be bottlenecked. That, that's just how bad it is. Certain times, I mean, people way down there, almost the hometown, trying to get through here. I mean, you could, you could be right up there by Panera Bread and see the light at Dairy Queen change four times before you, before you get through it.
Chairman mentioned, uh, doing this, I think it's a good idea up on the heels of this to go ahead and schedule it pretty quickly, is to have, uh, Mr. Ricketson and, uh, Rachel Hatcher come in. They do transportation planning. Because we have to adopt a ten-year transportation plan, just set raw priorities and all those things roll in. I want, I think that'd be a good idea to schedule that.
I guess, yes.
And something else, we, I mentioned earlier, um, you know, I understand that Liberty County, that we're, our water withdrawal, there, we may be in real good shape.
Well, you've been in the, you've been in the.
Yellow.
Non-withdrawal zone for about ten years.
Ten years.
And that's the reason when we put our well in, we had to do, uh, what I'm gonna call superficial aquifer. We weren't able to go to the ferrule and aquifer. And so, uh, no, they're not issuing any more well permits through the state of Georgia for public withdrawal in our area or Brunswick, um, or Chatham.
Chatham.
I heard Long County, they can still withdraw.
They can.
Well, and I, I, you know, I, I hate the, for one person to have all the skin, but I mean, from, I guess, Jane, I, I don't know, maybe Marcus Ray Road to the Long, to the Long County, Liberty County line over there is not that far. And if we, I mean, we need to try to start working with water on that end.
On the west end?
Yeah.
The city of Hinesville is in, is in casual conversation with Long County about.
Really?
Yeah, so the city can't withdraw. Well, nobody can.
Commissioner Walden, we, we tried that, like, whenever I first got on the board. So it, they, they're talking.
Yeah, Walterville actually was gonna locate a well over there and then Long County kinda.
Uh-huh.
They stole them the property, but they just said, yo.
They didn't give it a permit to get, get water?
We already know, we got a well that's in Riceburg, actually in MacIntyre.
MacIntyre County.
So, I mean, we, we know that there's people that we can work with and, you know, casual conversation, sometimes that works, sometimes it don't work. And that's what I'm saying.
It's the politi, it's the politics of it all, sir.
Are you in it?
I'm, I'm a third party.
You need some help.
Person, yeah, yeah. But, but I'm told it's showing optimism. That's all I can say. But there's, but there is a reason that the bypass is not in.
Yes, correct.
A neighboring county. I'm gonna leave it at that because we on the face.
By the way, by the way, right away, right away acquisition is scheduled to start on that connector project, um, this calendar year, after the July first, uh, reception of state budget. So we got a call on that today. So that's, that's moving along. The environmental's almost finished.
And much shot credit, thank you for saying that. We did, we set aside some funds in T-Splats for phase two of the, so, so yes, we have done some progressive things.
Some planning, yeah.
Yeah, we have done some, but we can't stop here.
No, no, you, you still gotta press out. You gotta do those plans.
Gonna get run over. All right, Chair.
Only other thing is that, uh, Commissioner Stevens reminded me that y'all had talked about going ahead and possibly doing the naming or the ceremonies to own the gym down at, at East End and also for the park.
No, Broadway Park.
I mean, Broadway, excuse me. So if, if you want to, we'll go ahead and get the calendars together and decide, you know, what that is. We can, we can be shaking out some dates and confirm those in our next meeting.
Outside events are good.
What about the playground, Justin?
Oh, the basketball court?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna wait until.
Okay.
The, uh.
Okay, that's good.
Improvements are, are taking care of. Mr. Chair, we'd have to get together and design what we wanna put up. Okay. All right, we'll do that.
All right, good stuff.
Miss Chair, but before, before we end, I just wanna give a shout out to First Presbyterian, soccer team, uh, state champs, uh, Liberty County High School boys, second place. Uh, they came in first in the, uh, four-by-one. I mean, numerous from, from the one hundred, they won the one hundred, the two hundred, four-by-one team, uh, everything. So four-by-four team came in seventh. And also Liberty County Recreation, uh, track all stars for, they went up to Augusta. I met them up there with just a little bit of sleep, but they, uh, they did a great job representing Liberty County. Couple, I think it was a couple first place, but second place. They, they, we came home with, with ribbons on the statewide. And of course, you know, with this being, you remember, we opened up late, so it was like short notice. Uh, so Liberty County did represent, I bear this chair. And then one more thing, uh, I, I know my chair was empty last week and you all voted. I'm fine with the vote, but also, uh, uh, just to clarify everything, I wasn't trying to do that because of my work schedule. Has zero to do with it. It was about being the continuity of our meeting schedules. And then I, I know Commissioner Thrift even mentioned something about, uh, about our employees have to stay late about the time. So if that's an issue, can we at least look at moving that time so they still don't have to stay? You, what, what I'm saying is.
Moving what time?
What, what I'm saying is you were talking about.
They wouldn't have to stay here till six.
Right, but we still have a meeting at six.
Right.
So what I was saying is if, if that's a concern about our employees.
They don't have to stay, well, not unless we went back to two, five o'clock or.
What I'm saying is if, if that was a concern about our employees staying, can we address that? That's.
I don't have to fix it, yes. I'm satisfied, but we took a vote and it was voted on unanimously.
Right, I, I was just wondering, like.
Yeah, that.
I was just wondering why it was brought up about our employees staying, but we're still not fixing the employees staying. So it was okay for them to stay late for one meeting.
One meeting, but not two a month.
Yeah. All that was in. Okay.
That's, that's totally fine.
Will you, Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's totally fine.
Yes, sir. Motion is second. All in favor?